Okay, it looks like everybody's here. We already started our meeting at eight thirty. We had executive session. We are back. We already called the meeting to order. And announced the attendance that everybody was present, but we have not done the pledge of allegiance. So I will start with that.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which stands one nation under God and individual, with the vision of justice for all.
Question. We were talking about flags. What if we move that flag to that flag and that flag to that flag, then at least it's in picture. Winner winner chicken dinner. That's an easy fix. Then everybody knows where we're facing and looking anyway. Um, meeting minutes.
Mister Chairman, we have before us the meeting minutes from November twenty first, twenty twenty-three as presented. I will make a motion to approve those minutes because I had a chance to review the video.
And I'll second.
Um, all those favor of approval say aye, aye. Any issues with the business agendas? Anybody want to add anything to the business agenda?
Yeah, I've got a.
Say we we tend to normally add, so I thought I'd throw that question out first.
Um, I'd just like to add the email we got from W S U. Um, for discussion item under old business. Unfinished business. Is there anything else?
And what's that the email from? Like Caphne and W S U or was it a different email?
Um, the Mr. Smith's one we got three days ago.
Yes, my my gaffe.
Okay, perfect.
I did respond to it already and sent them the documents that they requested. What they do with them is up to them.
Uh, could we get a copy of that?
Um, sure. Okay, it was, yeah, well.
Okay.
Uh, when did you do that new business?
Uh, I put it under unfinished business.
Unfinished business.
Uh, Mister Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the um, agenda with one add on, add on under W S U email under unfinished business.
No, second.
Okay, we have a motion of second to approve the business agenda with one add on any discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes. Uh, moving around along to public comment since it is nine o'clock, we will actually start public comment instead of waiting. Um, I don't have my zoom up, but login while we're doing it. Uh, with that, there is nobody in the room for public comment. One, two, three, four, one, go. Uh, does anybody online have public comment for the Board of Commissioners today? If you do, raise your hand and please state your name and general location in the county at the start of your testimony. Uh, there's also a three minute clock on the screen, so that should keep you a heads up on how much time you have remaining.
Yeah.
Uh, Anne, go ahead.
I thought I would go ahead and update you a little bit on uh, the the information going out to the community in Dalsport about the sewer contract issue that I know you guys are going to be discussing later on today. Uh, and we do appreciate that. I know you guys are aware there have been a series of recent meetings here in Dalsport to to bring some awareness to all the different options and possible outcomes uh, going forward with this contract. Along with that, there has been a petition effort by myself and and a couple of others. Um, due to the bad weather and the holidays over the last couple of weeks, we've not contacted as many people as we would like. But we do have about a hundred and sixty signatures in hand at the moment of Dalsport residents and rate payers who are interested, to say the least, in seeing Dalsport Utility District take over the O and M contract for the Dalsport sewer plant. Uh, then there are folks who have contacted us who are wanting to sign that we've just not caught up with yet due to holidays and some folks that we have not been able to get to their house yet. So I just wanted you to know that Dalsport is watching this issue. And that we appreciate your interest in it and your interest in doing what the best thing for Dalsport is. We are the ones who are impacted by what happens here more than anyone else. So we do appreciate your effort and just wanted you to know that we are paying attention to this. So I'm hoping to be able to sit in on your ten fifteen discussion about it this morning. We'll see what comes up between now and then. But I did want you to know that that Dalsport is paying attention to this. So you folks have a good day. Thank you for your efforts.
Thank you, ma'am. Um, anybody else online have citizen comment for the Board of Commissioners today? Raise your hand or unmute yourself. Seven, two, one, one.
Greg Wagner, C. Pacific Corp, the owner of four wind facilities here, it's owned by Warren Buffett, Berkshire Hathaway Energy. Last year, several of the sites at Hockda Road were repowered by Pacific Corp. The county commissioner allowed this to happen without any county involvement or oversight. Repower entails the decommissioning of old wind turbines that should be required to follow the E O Z, the M D P, decommissioning rules, state requirements, and other proper disposal of old equipment. This did not happen. The corporation then is allowed to erect newer, bigger, taller, longer bladed wind turbines. This new construction and new turbines due to their size creates new issues and problems such as bird kills, setback violations, environmental damage, just to name a few. This new construction should be required to go through the county permitting process as required by the E O Z, meeting all the state and local requirements and code. The wind corporation should submit all new studies as required by the E O Z and state and and hold public hearings. This did not happen. The commissioners have policies, plans, codes, ordinances in the E O Z in place for decommissioning and permitting of new wind turbine sites, but they are ignored and allow this to allow this repowering to happen unregulated. If a citizen wants to de- demolish the structure, they must apply for a de- demolition permit, pay fees, be inspected upon completion. If they then want to build a new structure on the same site, they must submit a site plan, pay a fee. The plan is reviewed by the county department. The applicant must pay county staff time, and if no problems arise, they are issued a building permit. During construction, inspections occur at the cost to the citizens. When the final inspection is passed, the occupancy permit is issued. This is a long drawn out costly process that must be followed by the citizens, yet a wind corporation can tell you, the commissioners, they are repowering and they are not required to abide by any of the county or state requirements. There are more wind corporations planning on repowering. Will you commissioners continue to just ignore all the requirements the corporation should follow? How much longer will you allow these corporations to dictate to the county and allow them to do whatever they want to do? I'd like to know why is there a double standard and favoritism for these corporations? The chairman stated recently, I will get every dime I can get out of these renewables. When will you start doing that? The county records, tax records show that every year the renewable corporations pay less taxes, and when this happens, the citizens must pay more. Why does this county favor the renewable corporations and give them tax breaks? When will you start looking out for the welfare of the citizens of this county? When will you live up to your oath of office and discharge your duties to the best of your abilities? Fine.
Thank you, Mister Wagner. I will definitely be having response to that one. Uh, does anybody else online have citizen comment for the Board of Commissioners today? Raise your hand or unmute yourself. Sherry, go ahead.
Good afternoon. Clicktatt County of Corporation. Um, you know, I've been looking into this whole public corporation, Economic Revitalization Authority, another public corporation, trying to unravel how our county, how our government is nothing but corporations. It's very fascinating. I think maybe you guys would find it fascinating, but I think you're all uh, profiting off these corporations. When you go onto Dunn's and Brad Street, there's about twenty twenty plus Click Attack County corporations. And then, interesting, Click Attack County of is an entity in Goldendale, Washington, registered with the System for Award Management, SAM, of U S General Services, G S A. The entity was registered March twenty seventh oh nine with a unique identity, a unique entity ID. And it gives that ID, activated July twenty first twenty three, expiring July nineteenth twenty four, and the business was started December twentieth in eighteen fifty nine, probably when Washington State Corporation got, you know, maybe that's that corporation, I'm not sure. Um, the registered business location is at one fifteen Court um, street, and then the current status is expired. Okay, interesting. How's that? The entity structure is a two A, it's a U S government entity, the business type is a twelve, a U S local government, and a C seven county. The officers, here we go, this is fun. It's Richard Foster and you, Mister Jacob Anderson, and Rob Van Cleve. You're the administrative services directors and but so Mister Anderson, maybe you can let me know, why does it say Click Attack County of that corporation that we just talked about? Why does it say its current status is expired? Or do I need to do more of my own investigation, which will probably be the case? So you know, just kind of thinking how the mob, the mob would be just jealous of these government corporations. You get to write your own rules, and then you get to hold people's property for ransom, and if we don't pay your ransom, you take our property. You do, and then you sell it. I don't know what the heck's going on here, and I hope I find a solution. I hope I can save these people that are good people, the people when I go out and go shopping friendly, they're helping. Their people are good people, except for maybe the criminals that want to steal our money and run little corporations acting like they're government. And then uh, I like to help these people and their children so they can stop being plundered. I know I still have twenty eight seconds. Stop being plundered and working so hard for these corporations to take our money, to take our property, to take everything we've worked so hard for. You would want, I would hope you, the corporation, or whatever corporation's running, I don't know. Maybe it's the Voiture eight two five, who knows who's running this county, but why don't you want to help your children? Why not stop the plundering? Let's get out of this corporation and become a government.
Thank you, Sherry.
Seventeen seventy six.
Anybody else online have citizen comments for the Board of Commissioners today? Two, six, six, two. Go ahead.
Yes, hello. Hello, Commissioners. Um, this is Tracy from Lyle. And I just had a couple of questions on your consent items today. You had three items um, for the consent agenda. Um, I believe it was the second one. I don't have the page open here, but I believe the second one was um, uh, I'm trying to open the page. Anyway, uh, was for the, the um, interpreter services for the newly hired uh, nurse with the um, health department. And you know, part of getting the job for that, for that um, for that position, uh, they wanted a bilingual person. That would, I would think, um, in include the uh, interpretation, you know, for her job. So I'm not sure why um, we're paying, we're going to pay another two hundred dollars a month for that position. And I did look up in the um, the um, municipal code, and I did not find where the the commissioners had um, had had an ordinance or assigned uh, anything in the municipal code, um, saying that they would pay another two hundred dollars for interpreter services. The other thing was um, with the Click Attack County uh, community and advisory committee um, that for the the Grange Hall thing. Um, well, they list Click Attack County and they have an address of one, one, five Clicktatt uh, street or one, one, five West Court Street, I'm sorry, in Goldendale. Um, that, if you look that up in the Dunn's numbers, so the Dunn's lookup number, um, if you look that address up in the Dunn's number, it comes up with three different uh, three different Click Attack Counties with three different numbers and three different addresses. So I went into each, each um, thing that came up, and I looked up the phone numbers. And the one that uh, that appears to be attached to this document um, by looking at the phone number that was used um, uh, on the page seven of the document, um, it was ending in six zero. That's actually connected to Public Works um, in Goldendale there, and I just wonder why the the, there is a, a um, it just doesn't say Public Works. Why, why it says Click Attack County Enrichment instead of Public Works if that's in fact who um, correlates with that phone number uh, on page seven of the um, of of the minutes or the, the agenda. So um, anyway, and I'm also wondering why there's so many Click Attack County uh, businesses or corporations um, on these Dunn's numbers. So um, I look up the Click Attack County that.
Thank you, your time is up. Appreciate your comments. Does anybody else online have public comment for the Board of Commissioners today? Raise your hand or unmute yourself. I don't see any. Does anybody else online have public comment for the Board of Commissioners today? Last call. All right, I see none. With that, I will close public comment for today. Um, and I will actually respond first for a change. Uh, two, six, six, two is Tracy. Um. So I'll start with Anne. Uh, Anne, thank you for your comment. Um. I too have issues or concerns. Um. And wants with the Dalsport um, O and M contract, which is why I made sure to put it on the agenda today. Hopefully uh, in in that discussion today, we will all learn a few things. Um, so I look forward to that discussion. Uh, Mister Wagner, I usually don't respond to you, but in this one I will. Um, of your three minute rant, I don't know any of it that was actually factual. Um, the way windmills are repowered is if they are replacing the generator with the same size generator, the blade with the same size blade, that is operation and maintenance. That is not a repowering. Uh, by state rule, uh, a repowering is if they went bigger. So yes, if they went taller and put in a bigger generator and new blades, they would have to come back before the board, we're back before the county with a whole new permit because everything changes. Uh, the SEPA was done with a specific um, wattage. Um, so I guess I would say if you can point out to me where I signed a deal that gave them the ability to upgrade their windmill to bigger and more powerful without going through the process, please show me that document because I know it doesn't exist. Um, with that, I I won't even get into the rest of your statements and the inaccuracies. Um, Sherry, I don't have much more to say about public corporations. Um, I R S, contact them, ask them why they mandated. I don't know. It's again, it's it's kind of outside of the wheelhouse of this uh, board, and that's where I will end my comments today, other than hopefully the board will seriously take into consideration uh, the items on our agenda to the per discussion today.
Great, and Anne and Greg, um, I can echo what Mister Christopher said. Um, those are, is everything I would have said. Um, Sherry, uh, again, it's nothing dubious about corporations. It's nothing that lets us out of anything. If anything, it um, does another layer of stop gates and check for the state and the federal government to track our money, uh, put it in the right accounts, have numbers for it so we can turn everything over, all the information, all the reports that is a very heavy duty that we take care of, and we are no different, if you check, than any other state or any other county in the United States. We're required by law to do these things. And that's all I have.
Okay.
Yeah, and thank you very much for commenting on something that's actually on the agenda for today. Um, that's what we like to see that. We we do like to hear that. Uh, we will be going going over potential um, uh, rules of procedure that will be um, requiring people to potentially comment on what is actually on the agenda. Um, and so I thank you for continuing to be interested and vigilant in your community, and I look forward to the conversation we have later today. Um, Mister Wagner, um, every year they pay less taxes and the citizens pay more. Um, you are correct. According to state law, um, when you have personal property, that personal property devalues. Uh, we have had many conversations at the state. Um, Commissioner Christopher and I have both lobbied at the state for changes to this. Um, and what we have come across is is any changes that would be made would likely make it worse for the citizens of Click Attack County, and this is what we are stuck with. Which then goes to your next comment on repowering or um, changing the blades or changing the nacelles. Uh, when they do that, they actually create a new lease on life, and what that does is that increases the cost that they're paying. And so it in essence resets where what they are paying in taxes, and it starts that depreciation over again, which is actually good for the citizens of Click Attack County. Every uh, you you heard many times of um, the issues that we are faced moving forward with regards to the taxes and the tax revenues that we receive in Click Attack County not keeping up with inflation. Every time one of these projects um, resets that depreciation schedule is a lease on life for the citizens of Click Attack County who can continue to receive the services that they currently receive that you use many of um, at the rate we currently have them. Without that repowering, the citizens of Click Attack County will be faced with continuing reduction in services. So thank you for for your comments as always and pointing out that um, that these wind projects have actually paid millions of dollars into Click Attack County uh, and its junior taxing districts since they're in uh, since they came here and that they have been a net benefit um, on the services for Click Attack County. Sherry, um, thank you as always for uh, the the civics uh, questions. Um, if you look very closely, you will see that even the federal government is a corporation. Uh, counties are corporations, states are corporations, they are built that way. Uh, the county government itself is a corporation, but we also have the public corporation, which is separate from the county government. Um, when you talk about the registrations, the that gets a little more nuanced. So each department used to have their own registrations with the state and feds. Um, and now that we went to the new SAM um, numbers, we are now incorporating those under one number where there used to be many different registrations. And that is one of the ways that the federal government is trying to streamline. Um, you know, natural resources, economic development, all of our state grants, and you, when you look at our uh, budget, you will see that much of the money that we use is by grants, and they have to be tracked. These are the ways that they do that. Uh, with regards to um, the current status being expired and Richard Foster being on there and me and Rob Van Cleve, I'm sure staff will look into that. Um, but I'm not certain if that is the Public Economic Development Corporation or just the uh, county corporation by itself. If it's county corporation that's expired, that's likely due to the fact that we now use the SAM number. Um, these things uh, get held over. Uh, but your comment on saying that we're holding people's property for ransom and we find a solution, um, taxes are what we all pay for the services that we all use. That is something that is older than time. And um, your comment that we are profiting off these corporations. Um, no members of this board, no members of the county um, are profiting off a corporation as if it's a for-profit corporation. All of our corporations are are nonprofit or governmental um, by itself, which you pointed out. Um, and Tracy, um, I will be in favor of the bilingual position and that increase. Um, I think that uh, when we require that um, of staff, um, if you've ever seen how difficult it is to get a public health nurse um, to come and work for a county when they can go work for anyone else making nearly twice as much money. Um, the things that we can do to help them uh, and to help us remain competitive in that marketplace, um, I'm in favor of. And the same questions and responses go to your questions on the Dunn's and Brad Street and why we have all these numbers. And with that, I yield back my touch.
Thank you, sir. Uh, with that, we will move on to a consent agenda.
Uh, Mister Chairman, we have before us the consent agenda with three items. My motion is to approve.
And I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda with three items. Uh, any discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of the consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Uh, payroll warrants.
Um, Mister Chairman, I make a motion to approve the payroll warrants in the amount of one hundred and six thousand four hundred and sixty four, four dollars and sixty four cents and payroll benefits in the amount of zero for the date ending December fourth, twenty twenty three.
I will second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion second, and the only discussion I will add is it's kind of nice to have that on the blue card. Um, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of paying the bills this week, um, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. I will also, under discussion for that, a little late discussion, I will say I was very happy to see the stack of bills was only about this thick, so my review went rather quickly. Sometimes when they bring in the two boxes, yeah, those are like rather lengthy. Um, with that, we are about six minutes early for our public meetings. Um, anybody have any updates they want to give for the next six minutes? In case somebody's tuning into one of these public meetings.
I don't have another one inside there, do we, with a different number?
The payroll ones?
Yeah, just wanted to make sure we don't have two of them. And then it's the same.
Same, same.
Okay, great. Just wanted to double check.
Thank you. Um, do we need to note if two or more of us are going to be in the meeting downstairs tonight?
We should have already noticed that.
We did that.
Wouldn't we?
Okay, just checking.
Um, yeah, we can talk about that a little bit. What's uh, are we running this meeting?
Game plan for that?
Yeah, what's the plan?
Well, we're not running the meeting. It's not our meeting. I I agreed to host the meeting because we have a bigger venue than the city does. Um, there is some mission formation going around in the public. Um. And some potential protests that might happen. Um. But the way I have set up the meeting is an informal roundtable discussion. So that all of the entities that are out there dealing with uh, mental health, fentanyl, homelessness, whatnot, can ask questions of the other entities um, and gain knowledge. Uh, hopefully, everybody walks away from this meeting knowing more than they did before. Uh, and then each agency can go about or group uh, can go about trying to work to improve whatever they need to or want to improve. Um. I am not going to have public comment at this meeting because I, it is again, it's an agency roundtable. Um, so whether you're pro or con to whatever the issue is being discussed. Um. I don't know that that benefits the information gathering of the agencies. So the bottom room is set up as a big giant roundtable. There will be no assigned seating, sit wherever you want. Um, it isn't our meeting, so I won't have to, you know, call a meeting to order or any of that kind of stuff. We're just hosting it. Uh, and then it will just be open for all of the entities, you know, Sheriff's Office, Public Health, Senior Services, um, City, WAGAP, um, I've heard potentially like programs for peaceful living, I mean, and and everybody can kind of get together and and hopefully learn. And hopefully learn what each and. Each one of all of us do. And then they can go back to their agency and make whatever decisions they want to make. For their agent.
So are we not going to have a facilitator? Or will you facilitate? I mean, I just walking into a big open meeting saying this is completely open seems like a can of worms.
Would you like to be the facilitator?
Oh, I didn't call.
Then I again, it is a. A round table. I will explain essentially what I just explained. If people start getting out of line, I might step in and try to calm it down, but I doubt that will happen unless it's from the public. And I think it will, everybody will be able to just. Ask their questions of whatever agency they may have and gain the knowledge that they might need to make further informed decisions moving forward.
Do we have an online option? Is it being recorded?
It's not being recorded, but it's teams downstairs.
Okay. And are we setting up like chairs out in the hallway for?
We will have. We made the big table, we'll have chairs along each wall and probably we'll open the glass doors in case there's that many people. Have a row of chairs there and then we'll probably have whatever remaining chairs we have. To be able to use that lobby space and if there's people that much, we'll turn on the speaker so the lobby can hear. The same thing, the which might be the first time we get to actually use the lobby speaker. So. Staff went down yesterday and kind of got a run through with Jordan to run the equipment. And. That's what I know about that.
So the agencies are there going to be participations or. PowerPoints or anything like that, or is it just we're just chatting?
I have no idea.
Okay.
Again, it's it's not a meeting that we are hosting. To push a certain topic, even though that is the. Opinion of some. It is an incorrect opinion. This is a roundtable discussion. By all the agencies that have questions. And it started with the city of Goldendale having questions. And incorrect. Assumptions. That the county had operational jurisdiction over agencies that doesn't have operational jurisdictions. So if we all get in the same room, hopefully they can ask those questions. We can inform them. Who runs what? And the agency that runs whatever they have the question of can answer whatever questions they have. They shouldn't ask me a WAGAP question. I don't know, I have no jurisdiction over WAGAP. I mean, they can ask me a public health or a mental health question, but I won't be able to answer it. I'll have to write it down and go get an answer and give it back to them. So I'm hoping that will serve this purpose by having. All the people or stakeholders. Sitting around the same table and then my. My ideal goal is that. It's only the agencies or the stakeholder groups that are actually sitting at the table. The general public that wants to listen and learn can, but not at the table. This is an agency or group discussion. And if if somebody. Wants to hold, somebody that. Works in whatever realm, somebody wants to host a public meeting or gathering or. Citizen comment over that discussion that they can schedule their own meeting and have public comment regarding whatever discussion they want. We're just facilitating this on a one time because we have a bigger conference room than the city. With that, next time, maybe we have the city council or the city of Goldendale reserve the room. And they can send us an invite to their meeting yesterday. That's what I think of that.
Okay.
And with that, we are now past nine thirty, so we will start our nine thirty public meetings and the first item on our. Agenda to discuss in our public meeting is to consider the approval of boundary line adjustment BLA twenty twenty three dash zero one. And notice to the public, we usually do this at one thirty, but since this is kind of the last day to record, we moved it up to give staff more time. So we do have about seven of these to get through. So with that, we'll we'll take a staff update on BLA twenty twenty three dash zero one.
Boundary line adjustment number BLA two zero two three dash zero one is proposal to adjust the common property line between parcels. Zero three, one, zero, one, three, one, eight, zero, seven, zero, one, zero, zero. And zero, three, one, zero, one, three, six, one, zero, 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 one, zero, zero. Off of Northwest Loop Road. The proposed boundary line adjustment is located within a portion of section thirteen township three. Range ten, Willamette, Rhydian, Click Tech County, White Salmon vicinity. Administrative review of the boundary line adjustment has been completed. Signatures have been obtained from road. Health, planning departments and the treasurer's office. All conditions attached to preliminary approval have been met. If the board finds that it's in the public's interest. To approve the boundary line adjustment, a motion needs to be granted for final approval of BLA two zero two three dash zero one.
Any discussion by the board on this one?
Done here.
Other than I'm glad I'm not the fence builder on this or any of the adjoining properties. With that, I would entertain a motion.
Mister Chairman, we have before us the approval of BLA twenty twenty three dash zero one applicants Dirk Solomon. My motion is to approve.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve BLA twenty twenty three dash zero one. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, motion passes. Sure, all these applicants are very happy and wonder how many of them are tuning in just to make sure they get their stuff done by the end of the year.
I think Rebecca's happiest. They've been getting emails. Was it going through? So. I, and the next one is short cut two zero two two dash one seven. This was oversight by me, does not need commissioner commissioner approval. So I did not bring the mylar down. Under the ordinance, this is falls underneath the ordinance, it does not have to get the boards.
I didn't know any short plats were that way.
And I, as I was trying to get everything lined up, I threw all the names in there and this is one that actually didn't have to come in today.
What what? What stipulates whether it has to come before us or not come before us?
So in the ordinance of eight point seven three, if it doesn't have any public dedication. Or been previously padded. It does not require the signature of the commissioners. It requires signatures of all the other departments to make sure it meets all the conditions.
Already been done.
Interesting. Okay, so you don't need an approval for short but SPL twenty twenty two dash seventeen, correct?
Correct.
I was gonna say, I've never seen it. How often does that happen?
And not very often because it's one of it's one that had been previously padded. And then it's also not going to be connected to county. Road, so it's not going to be county. Dedication. So you don't come across it too often, but it does a couple of times a year.
So then if it doesn't need our signature, why is it on our agenda?
Because I'd made the mistake.
So there there are short plots that go through that we don't even know about.
Well, you do because in our routing process, when the application is received, we send a copy of the application and the. Map and everything to you at the beginning of the process when we send for comments to everybody.
And we're probably is under the assumption that we.
That is coming eventually. Yeah, technically I don't look at most of those because I know I'll look at it eventually later.
Well, at one time in history, it did come through and commissioners signed for that hole. This is just a portion of a hole that they did earlier.
Um, no, it's never been part of a pack. So and sometimes things are. Divided through other means, but not through the county, like if they do like a.
So like when someone does an administrative, so if you're breaking sixties off or eighties off of say a four hundred. I know those don't come through, but anything that was a short pot, I thought always came through, so.
It's under the eight point seven three, the short padding ordinance.
Well, I guess I I don't know enough about that to render a decision. But I. I would. I I guess I would look for insight from staff or the board on whether it thinks. There could be potential for development in areas that. We maybe don't want development. Uh, where there's no water and aquifer or whatever, if it never, it just seems weird.
So it does go through the approvals of all the other departments that it normally does. With the environmental health, public works.
Right, but none of those are actually looking at availability of a water source. I mean, we hope you can dig a well and find water, but you might be in an area that doesn't have very good aquifer recharge. So you may not be able to drill a well and we just subdivided a bunch of properties and somebody sold them to a willing buyer who thought they were going to get a well. So it's just I I can see issues down the road potentially is why I break that up.
Then I will say that it goes in environmental health, that's where they look at that. There's if there's. Conditions or anything with water source, it that is something that's still looked at the same way through environmental health as it does any.
Any other, right?
Any college even.
Like said, and I guess that's on us because if we have areas in the county that we do not. Want to see development because of water issues or whatever, it would be up to us to change our zoning or our rules. To then not allow in that area.
And that's where like the zoning, you have areas that are twenty acres or more and then there's some that can be five thousand square feet. And that's going to fall within your zoning ordinance.
Right. Learn something new every day.
Two Tuesdays in a row.
All right. All right, moving on.
Okay, so the next one. Is boundary line adjustment BLA two zero two three dash one seven Freeman and Kickback LLC. The boundary line adjustment number BLA two zero two three is the propose dash one two is a proposal to adjust the common property line between proposed. Parcels zero four, one, three, two, three, five, zero, zero, six, zero, one, zero, zero. And it's zero, four, one, three, two, three, five, zero, zero, six, zero, two, zero, zero. Off of Third Street. Proposed boundary line adjustment is located within a portion of section twenty three for third. Section twenty three township four range thirteen Willamette, Rhydian, Click Tech County, Washington, in the Click Tech. Vicinity. The administrative review of the boundary line adjustment has been completed. Signatures have been obtained from the road, health. And planning departments and the treasurer's office. All conditions attached to preliminary approval have been met. If the board finds that it's in the public's interest to approve this boundary line adjustment, a motion will be needed to grant final approval of BLA two zero two three dash one two.
Okay, any comment or discussion on that one?
None here, sir.
Okay, I would entertain a motion.
Mister Chairman, we have before us the approval of BLA twenty twenty three dash one two. The applicant is Freeman. My motion is to approve.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve BLA twenty twenty three dash one two. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of BLA twenty twenty three dash one two, say aye. Aye, motion passes. I was already looking at the next one. Okay, next item. Go ahead.
Okay, final approval for short part SPL two zero two three dash zero four. Carrie and Constance Bachman. Is it proposal to create two lots from parcel zero, five, one, five, two, three, zero, 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 nine, zero, zero. The proposed short flat is located within a portion of section twenty three township five range fifteen Willamette, Rhydian. Click Tech County, Washington, in the Goldendale vicinity. The administrative review of the short plot has been completed. Signatures have been obtained from the road. Health and planning departments, including the treasurer's office. All conditions attached to preliminary approval have been met. If the board finds that it's in the public's interest to approve this short flat, a motion needs to be made granting final approval of short. SPL two zero two three dash zero four. For the Bachmans.
I didn't have any of this on the road seat.
Yeah, other than it always, I'm always curious why people put roads where they put roads and. Utilities where they put utilities and.
Coming in here.
Yeah, that's utilities.
That one's already going to be built on, right? So they're getting to it here rather than coming the other.
Right, but I I would think that. I guess that they already have a driveway existing halfway or something. You would think you'd put along a property line. Any access road so that you don't have to split your parcel with your neighbor driving through the middle of it all the time? Or or topography or whatever, so it's it's just kind of one of those, who knows? Any other discussion on SPL twenty twenty three dash zero four?
Done here, sir.
Okay, to entertain a motion.
Mister Chairman, we have before us the approval of short plot twenty twenty three dash zero four with the applicants Bachman. My motion is to approve.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. And a second for SPL twenty twenty three dash zero four. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval, say aye. Aye, motion passes. And then you look at ones like this that are kind of crooked, but they all make sense. It's like, I like that.
Well, when you're paying the surveyor, you want them to be straight.
Well, or whichever engineer you're hiring to. I mean, did you kind of come up with the property line yourself or did you? And then tell the surveyor what to survey? Or do you have an engineer actually do it who you look at like this and you're like, yeah, no, that was. There's good stuff there. Okay, moving on to oh six.
Short plot number SPL two zero two three dash zero six is a proposal to create four lots from parcel number zero, three, one, two, zero, three, zero, zero. Zero, zero, one, one, zero, zero. The proposed short plot is located within a portion of section three township three range twelve, Willamette, Rhydian. Click Tech County, Washington, in the Appleton vicinity. The administrative review of the short plot has been completed. Signatures have been obtained and from the road, health and planning departments and the treasurer's office. All conditions attached to preliminary approval have been met. If the board finds it's in the public's interest to approve this short flat, a motion needs to be granted for final approval of. SPL two zero two three dash zero six for Brent Rachi.
Lot of conditions. Lot of notes. It's like a full page of notes. Any any discussion on this one?
No.
Multiple pages of notes.
Mm hmm. I don't know that I've ever seen one that had so many. If there's. Well, whenever there, everybody decides there's no discussion, which I have none, I would entertain.
Mister Chairman, we have before a short plot twenty twenty three dash zero six. The applicant is Brent Rachi. My motion is to approve.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve SPL twenty twenty three dash zero six. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, motion passes. Aye, motion passes. On the number seven, if you're in.
Okay. The applicant is Bryce Rachi. Short plat number SPL two zero two three dash zero seven is proposal to create four lots from parcel number zero, three, one, two, zero, three, zero, 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 five, zero, zero. The proposed short plat is okay within a portion of section three township three, range twelve, Willamette, Meridian, Clicktack County, Washington, in the Appleton vicinity. The administrative review of the short plat has been completed. Signatures have been obtained from the road, health and planning departments and the treasurer's office. All conditions attached to preliminary approval have been met. If the board finds it's in the public's interest to approve this short plat, a motion needs to be made granting final approval SPL two zero two three dash zero seven.
This is just kind of neighboring property from the previous.
Yes.
Do you see that? In the, the last condition.
That's an interesting condition.
Certain essence there, two ecologies and interpretations.
Um, condition on that last one was all the wells in the short plat can't have more than a combined five thousand gallon draw of water. Any idea how they would achieve that? I mean, if they drill individual wells on four lots, how do you, I mean, I ecology never checks those things. Or are they gonna be required to have a shared well? And I mean, that's an ecology thing. So I don't know that you're gonna even be able to answer that question.
So, um, when you, like the initial short fat right there, that's like a five thousand. So if you break it down, the acceptable standard is gonna be the twelve. That would allow the twelve for each. So, um, even if those were larger lots, that would trigger something else through ecology to get water rights from the state because those will not be of acceptable standard. Now, as far as monitoring and, um, you would have to check with David Kavanaugh, but I believe that's up to them. I, I don't know how the state's gonna start tracking that, but uh, from my understanding, there's kinda starting to pay more attention, but I think that's more of the state level. So when you have a note like that, even if the lots can be further divided for zoning, that's gonna trigger something else for them to get additional water, um, approval.
There's no water rights up there. What did, um, where it'll go is, is right now, you know, we don't have in-stream flow set on the Clickitab, Dwight Salmon or anything, Clicktack County. So ecology can't do a whole lot here yet. Um, when you look at what, um, the Yakima Basin Benton County are having to deal with, they're doing monitoring on every well each year. So they require them to put a meter on. And so what they're saying is a, a project begins. And so say it was platted twenty years ago, thirty years ago from, they, they picked an artificial time point. And then as you plot replat from there over time, what happens is, um, you only have five thousand gallons per day for that whole area. And so that's the twelve pack rule she's mentioning that, um, unless you can find ways to become really efficient, you can only create twelve lots out of that old original project. It's gonna get ugly in the future.
Well, that's why I don't, cause Yakima Benton, um, the other one over there, I can't think of, hit it fast, there you go. I think Stevens is even done differently and not because of the same reason. Um, their county actually water banks and is in charge of watching the meters. And, um, it all shows up on the county essentially database when somebody uses over their whatever allotment. Kind of a scenario and, and I guess that's where I'm coming from in our future discussions about what we wanna do with the water rights we currently own. Um, issues like this come into play for that discussion, which is another discussion.
And so, you know, so when the, like the ones that don't have to, that don't come in front of you like the other one, this is what I mean, it still gets under the same conditions and notes as it once it came in front of you. But those are all questions that David Kavanaugh could probably sit down with you and go over with you.
Well, I, I, I think like my seatmate said, eventually that's gonna be something that we are told. Uh, that we have to monitor and regulate, but so far we haven't had that issue. Um, all right, we're moving on and we're still under consideration of oh seven. If there's no, whenever the discussion is over, I would entertain a motion.
Question for you, SPL twenty twenty-three dash oh seven and oh six, did they come out of the original short plat?
And they were not. They were separated prior to coming to me, um, by yeah, they were separated prior to, um, through the assesses after they, they did the deed process. I do not know exactly what they did running off my head right now, but they were separated prior to, they were not. I checked their titles, checked everything in prior to accepting the application and I could not find where these two were connected in ownership for, um.
Part of a short plat.
For part of a short plat, because if they were connected intertwined, um, anywhere in the title reports to where, then that would have been a subdivision. But I double, I checked everything to make sure that they were not connected. I mean, other than blood.
Mister Chairman, we have before us SPL twenty twenty-three dash zero seven. The applicant is Bryce Rachi. Uh, my motion is to approve.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve SPL twenty twenty-three dash zero seven. All is in favor of approval, say aye.
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 Aye, motion passes. Why is ecology so concerned about the water there?
Ecology is concerned about water everywhere.
Well, yeah, but I, I don't know that I've ever seen one of these short plats that are saying you have to share the water source thing.
I think that's ecology pushing that, um, in terms of the, their policy interpretations.
And I can't say that a lot of times, um, in the past, sometimes it's in the preliminary approval for their conditions that they know of it. It's just the verbiage might have changed a little bit to make it to where when someone's buying the uh, they're buying the property, they're looking at the plat and it's making it to where it is more transparent on there for the future.
That's the main issue. I wanna make sure we, I like here because it's addressed because I don't want anybody being surprised after they buy the property. They should have looked at the plat. They should have read all the notes, just like I read with my squirrel habitat and, you know. So there wasn't a lot of surprises.
Yes, I think that's the big thing that's changed is just making sure the transparency is right there on the flat.
Well, the other issue is once it's on the plat, it's on the plat. And if the college, if there's a change in legislation or there's a change in policy with ecology, it doesn't matter. You've already agreed to it.
At the point.
Something be cognizant.
I'm cognizant, my coffee cup is empty. I have a plan for that.
Backup.
Inter sturd.
Okay, so I have Longview Land LLC with a boundary line adjustment. This boundary line adjustment is number BLA two zero two three dash zero seven is a proposal to adjust the common property line between parcels zero, three, one, three, one, eight, one, two, zero, seven, zero, one, zero, 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 three, one, three, one, eight, one, two, zero, seven, zero, two, zero, zero. And parcel number zero, three, one, three, one, eight, one, two, zero, seven, zero, three, zero, zero. Off of Fisher Hill Road. The proposed boundary line adjustment is located within a portion of section eighteen township three, range thirteen, Willamette, Meridian, Clicktack County, Washington, in the Lyle vicinity. The administrative review for the boundary line adjustment has been completed. Signatures have been obtained from the road, health, planning departments and treasurer's office. All conditions attached to preliminary approval have been met. If the board finds that the public's interest to approve this boundary line adjustment, a motion will be needed to grant final approval of BLA two zero two three dash zero seven.
Is anybody else really happy that she has to read all the property numbers and have to do that and mess them up? You do a very good job, by the way.
Thank you. I try not to talk too fast, but I do my myself.
I would bumble those.
Are they really gonna be able to put a road through that little narrow piece?
Okay, so, um, that narrow piece is there, that is not a road, um, but they can use that for their, that is their access. It's not an easement or roads that didn't have to meet those road conditions, cause their access is off of the, um, Fisher Hill Road. If you see where it bumps out seventy feet to make it a total of a hundred, that is because one of the order in the general rule, it has to be minimum of a hundred feet at midpoint plus some.
For the.
For the, um, general rule.
General setback or whatever.
And for, yeah, cause it has to be minimum of a hundred feet in width. Their access is technically off the road, so they're just, that's not a road. I mean, it's a road, but it's not a road.
It can be a private driveway type of thing and not a road.
Yep.
Right. Okay, uh, Mister Chairman, we have before us BLA twenty twenty-three dash zero seven. Uh, the applicant is Long, uh, Longview Land LLC slash Stifler. Uh, my motion is to approve.
And I'll second.
Okay, motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor of approval of BLA twenty twenty-three dash zero seven, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. I wish you the best of luck in completing all these today.
It's gonna be awesome.
At least you didn't have to start at one or two o'clock.
And I'm sure it's the others have to be happy too. So thank you for making that.
Yep.
Trying to keep them separate.
Yeah, we so chipper.
We're back.
Heff.
I need to see the same counselor you go to.
Gotta stay positive.
Yes.
Oh, did you hear that? He's requesting another one of these fancy pens.
Got it.
He's, I mean, it's.
Well, I had one, somebody stole it.
I don't know how you run out of ink, when you just put a J down.
Cause it's so fine, it dies. My fat fingers. Where'd it go? I'm gonna throw it away.
Yes.
Oh, I don't wanna see this.
So don't look at that one yet. We'll get to the negative at the end.
Well, I was actually looking for a date and I was hoping it said twenty twenty-two and not twenty twenty-three.
That's fresh off today, this morning.
My point.
Wow.
Oh, I, I was hoping the picture was twenty twenty-two.
No, twenty twenty-three. That's what five inches of rain will get you in one storm.
All right, well, I see you have some fun stuff for us today. Ready when you are, sir.
Okay, well, we don't have anything on the consent agenda today or no public hearings. Look at us. So that we just work right through that. We do have a title twelve discussion on Thursday. So we'll jump right into the construction program. Um, white plastic lines work is suspended until the spring, curb warning and guideposts. Um, change order for their chains in their DBE contractor. Their sub is at HQ, so probably not till beginning of next year or later. Brushing contracts and bonds have been signed by the contractor and being overnighted to county. I think we actually have them now and, um, if they wanna get started as soon as possible. Pickleton, the award package has been Pickleton area paving award package has been sent to the contractor. On the design side, speaking of getting things done, we have somebody driving to Ritzville today to pick up the last parcel. They signed off for the last parcel. And we're getting it because we have to meet the deadline to record it. And it is very critical to us. If we don't meet the deadline, we're probably looking at, I don't know, you're looking at the difference between bidding it in January versus bidding it in April. And I don't have to tell the board the cost difference that will be for the count. Um, so that the data collection, we did the, the kickoff meeting last week and the consultant is planning to start work this week and the other stuff we're continuing to work forward on. Maintenance end, um, in Goldendale, uh, we're brushing and doing winter work. That means checking for rocks, moving rocks. West end, when we'll get to that more in, we have flooding in the Glenwood area. We'll get more into deep depth here in a minute. Um, we'll do some brushing and on Trout Lake Highway, we're pumping, um, the Fisher Hill quarry in anticipation of the, of the contractor. And we'll clean culverts if we get to it over there. We don't have to worry. They're getting flushed out really well. Um, so brings us to the upcoming facilities. The last three pictures, yes, we were able to get in touch with Jean. It took us a little while, but she had some personal issues and was out of communication. Uh, but we have now got that taken and she, so she should have the, we're hoping to have the three, the pictures done and delivered and replace the one that is a duplicate.
I see the, uh, nice fancy picnic table out there.
Yes, that is done.
They're just in time for winter.
Yes.
I'll enjoy it in the spring. It is complete.
Yeah, so we, we, once we get the pictures, we get everything, then we can, we can bring you a final report on three oh seven. And, uh, we're gonna get to that here and soon we'll be, do hopefully closing out three oh six too. Um, jail roof, we're still working. They're still working on the manufacturer's warranties punch list. Um, exhibit building, we should complete the insulation there this week. See, uh, Superior Court, we're drafting construction contracts for next year. In the process of that, uh, picnic table will be installed this week and we should be done. There, uh, we have a Christmas bazaar sale in Dallasport Community Center this weekend. We don't. The, uh, community council does. Um, Christmas tree decorating is scheduled for Wednesday, tomorrow. Um, everything else.
Taking the opportunity to change the light bulbs since you have the high boy out here.
Bet you we are. We're gonna fix the light bulbs and a few other things while we have the lift. Um, everything else is the same. We're starting on the voters. We are moving, um, uh, Gilligan, um, Frank, there we go. I can only remember by the show, um. So, uh, yeah, we're moving him tomorrow. Um, radio sites, everything else is, we're just got a few punch list items getting completed. And we get to the follow-up. So we'll get into the flooding and there's two packages, there's, there's two main areas that the water's over the road right now. One is Latticus Road by the bridge. Our bridge is completely underwater. Um, every time this does this, we are worried that we'll come back one day and the bridge won't be there. That's why it would be, that's, that's the main reason the bridge is on to be replaced, so it gets elevated out of the water. Um, so those are the pictures from Latticus, Mount Adams Highway with Saint Creek, it's Fraser Creek. That's flooded. Uh, we've also lost a little portion of the road on Latticus today. Um, hopefully we're supposed to get more rain, so hopefully it won't be too bad. Uh, Mount Adams Highway is kind of the same thing it does every year. Um, right there, there's a house that seems to have a tendency, we also have a, we also have a bridge there that this, this is a culvert here, but there's a little bit further down a bridge where the the bridge is actually skewed to the creek. When it was installed, it's more parallel with the road. So the creek has to do a ninety, cricks don't like to do nineties. So it goes up over the top and then it floods out a house. Um.
I thought that got addressed. I thought that got addressed already.
We did some work there and some of that was addressed, but um. Long term, depends on the weather. I mean, we, we take out a quite a bit, but if we get all the rain they're predicting. It won't probably fix it for this event. The other concern, in case you hear, is Bird Creek in Glenwood. It's four inches from the bridge right now. If it goes over the bridge, it floods the post office. Again, that's why that project is on the sixth year is to replace that bridge. So you open up that channel and you let it go. That's what it really needs. Is the downstream of the channel, so then it will flow. It won't go over the bridge and you raise the bridge level up. And you open the, the channel a little more and then you won't back Eddie it into their post office.
How far do we have to go downstream in order to open that channel?
Not too far, not too bad at all. Actually, it's, it's mainly. Should, I should say upstream of that by the post office is where we need to kind of clean that area up and that would all be part of that project.
So. Correct me if I'm wrong. I'm hearing you right. There's three issues. And we have plans to address two of them. Do we have plans to address the Mount Adams Highway one?
Mount Adams Highway one, we don't, uh, because I mean, that's. You would have to get in. It's a, it's a major project to reestablish Fraser Crick. Because regardless of what you do with the bridge, I mean, you're still doing a ninety to the bridge. Because the road runs parallel to the, to the crick. I mean. You could probably go in and redevelop the crick channel. We have not looked at that because of the cost. And that one runs over the road and usually now that it's pretty much addressed by the house. And again. While it's bad for the landowner. That's, they built the house there. It's not county property. And that's not county water. That, you know, it's not coming off the road that's flooding the house. It's running across the road from down, way downstream. So that one we have not looked at. Then there's Troll Lane, which I didn't mention, and that's close to flooding and that floods every year. But there's not a lot you can do at Troll Lane. I know Commissioner Anderson is very familiar with the flooding and all that out there because I've been in some of those meetings with frogs and everything else. Because the water, it's really flat. It's just, you know, you could jack the road up. That prevents the water from going across the road, but now you've essentially created a dam and it backs up into everybody's property. So you just kind of let it do what it does and it's done it for hundreds of years. You know, our suggestion to the people, and we have addressed some of that in the past. With the Bird Creek and Fraser Crick. By telling people now. If we know it's in an area, we may can put it on the face of the plat that you, you know, that we've seen localized flooding here. So it's buyer, you know, it's buyer aware. The people subdividing don't like that, but at least they don't come back to the county and say, you knew this was a problem. So that's how we've addressed those areas because there's really. No fix without something major. Working with the feds and. And you're not going to go in there.
Building a bridge across there.
Yeah, you're not going to go with it, you know.
Well, and then they're going to call it a salmon bearing stream and not allow you to work on it anyways.
You know, they won't let you hog it out and turn it into a stream though, you know, where you'd go in and uh, remove everything. So you actually create a channel. They don't want that. That's bad for the frogs. So that, that takes care of that. Again, just giving you the heads up. Um. There's annexation we talked about. Yes, it went through. There is one piece of, there is one parcel and I've highlighted it on here. This is a county parcel. They do not get this like they do the road right away because it's not right away, even though we bought it with a project. It is not the road right away. But I wanted to bring it to your attention. Because ultimately, we do not want to keep this parcel. Because it is the storm pond for those improvements we did. On uh, Lupra are on, on uh, Lupro, yes. All that water runs there. White Salmon has looked at putting water in it as development. For developing, a pond has not been built for that. Uh, could they increase the size of it? Sure, but does the county want to own it? I don't think so. Um, yeah, so you know, we paid around fourteen or fifteen thousand dollars for the parcel approximately. I don't know the exact cost right now. But it's approximately fifteen. But in the long run, we might be better off just deeding it over to the county. But again, I'm looking for the board's input here.
I'm in favor of deeding it to the city since the city annexed it. That's now their road and their problem. Um, we paid fourteen thousand, but that was part of our project. Uh, when we fixed that road going through there, um, and knowing that the city is looking to do their own. Uh, affordable housing development up there, I would be happy to give it to them and they can work with the landowner to enlarge that pond if they need.
So there's, there's a stormwater runoff pond in there.
That's what it was built for. We built it for a pond. It's technically not right away. Right away automatically goes to the city when we annex it in.
Would they?
And when they annex, yes, you are correct. Uh, when they annex, but because this is a parcel, we actually bought a portion of a parcel. To build the pond. The county owns it. It doesn't automatically go there. I'll work with the P A's office, but I wanted the board's input. Sounds like Commissioner Anderson's in favor.
I, yeah, I, I agree with Commissioner Anderson. It doesn't really hold. I guess I would say value. Um, I don't believe you're going to be able to uh, put this parcel on a auction. And get more than the one dollar we're going to get from White Salmon. Uh, it serves uh, the city of White Salmon a purpose. Uh, to help them complete their project. So in being a good and friendly neighbor, I, I think it wise that we work with them and. Transfer.
Okay, I will check with the P A. I don't think there's any loopholes for that. And then maybe Commissioner Anderson, when we meet with the mayor to talk about that, we can break this up.
Okay, sounds good.
And that's all I get.
You're meeting with the mayor?
Usually every week, but this is on the, she wanted information on the S T P program and how much money they get.
S T P, is that the affordable housing thing?
No. Road dollars.
Oh.
Okay, good.
That's it?
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Perfect timing.
Kind of perfect timing. We would have had the wastewater contract discussion at the end of his thing, so we didn't have to sit around, but. That was a bad scheduling thing by me.
Oh, it's fine.
Um, moving on, ten fifteen and it's ten fifteen. Wow, we are running on time today. Uh, department update from intern planning director Lori Anderson to tell us about all the fun stuff happening upstairs this week.
Well, next week will be more fun with holiday parties, but.
It's already fun. I get to sit up there in my meeting and watch you guys decorate.
Oh.
Whole building.
Well, sorry. Some decorated this.
I did find it funny that we have a Christmas tree on one end of the hallway and a Grinch on the other end of the hallway.
Well, you know.
Public Works Grinchy, it, it worked.
Everyone wants to celebrate different and different holidays, so. Grinch news trees, they all work one way or another. So Planning Department update, you already know quite a bit about Planning Commission's upcoming workshops. Um, the zoning ordinance, we got it updated with the solar prohibition parts in it. Um, it's on the county's website now. The notice of adoption goes out tomorrow or will be published tomorrow. And while it's on our website, we'll put a little more information around it, but most importantly, it's out there now. Moving on to under canvas, again, um prosecuting attorneys taking the lead and um. As um Attorney Cranston says, the appeal is still active and it's closed record hearing. So one thing that I think a lot of us may have forgot, it's not just there is a SEPA and conditional use. It also involves a recreation park. So once, because they have all those tin camping, glamping things. So anyway, now that. They're not quite there yet, but when the conditional use is all done and finalized, then we need to bring the binding site plan. Which would be a draft to the board. And then, then they would go forth, do their construction and come back and get the final binding site plan. Filed and an operating permit would be issued. So while they're proceeding, it's. They still have more to do, I guess the best way to say that.
But in that part that you said that they still have more to do is no public hearings.
Correct. Normally what happens, just like other.
Falling under other county code and, and whether goes, yeah, okay.
So that, that is still in the works. Um, and again, taking direction from the prosecutor's office on that. Bluebird Solar No Update year-end plat fi- filings, as you well know, you just approved six of them. The assessors freeze on values goes into effect at the end of business today. So um, usually sometime later, January, beginning of February, they will. Unfreeze or thaw it or whatever the appropriate wording is. Um, and then Planning Department are kind of back on track. Last week, we routed a shore plat that had a SEPA. Later this week, we'll be doing another one. As well as a conditional use relatively simple, so we're. We're plowing ahead, doing great things.
You have a conditional use permit active right now? What is that one?
Well, the one will be routing will be um, for a coffee stand, farm table, like little market.
Oh, I see.
Um, not market, a little store-like thing off Highway ninety-seven near the Mountain View Point.
Oh. And, and, and just so I'm, because I just brought another question into my head. C U Ps go before the Board of Adjustment.
Correct.
And get final approval essentially for Board of Adjustment. It doesn't come here afterwards like the Planning Commission.
Correct. Board of.
The only time it comes before us is if there is an appeal to the C U P. And not an appeal to the C U P and the SEPA, correct?
Well, an appeal to the conditional use permit would actually go to Superior Court. But if there's an appeal to the SEPA. Which would be long before we'd get to a public hearing for the conditional use permit. The Board of County Commissioners. Technically would he hear the SEPA appeal.
Unless they give it to a hearing.
Here is, correct. And there's always another leg or another.
I know, but it's like some of them go this way and some of them go that way, so I get confused on which one goes where.
And, and hopefully some of these will be more simple projects and just go. Go forward. And then the last thing, the requests for proposals, still working with Public Works and Jeff is here if we have any questions. Because I'm assuming we still need to go forth.
Do we have any kind of an ETA on when we'll be ready with that thing?
Shortly, shortly. I just have some people on vacation.
Vacation, so it's not allowed.
I know, yeah.
Okay. Any questions for Lori?
No. I'm good. Oh, thank you and have a good afternoon and I'm sure, well, well, morning too. Sure, we'll have more next week. Thank you.
Yep. Okay.
Here she is.
Next, uh, I thought we were supposed to have H R give us update. Maybe that's Thursday. Okay, yep. Kate, there is Ms. Courtney. Our next item of business is adult probation. Chief Probation Officer Courtney Cook with a grant update. Uh, on Zoom, go ahead.
Yes, thank you for letting me attend by Zoom again. Um, my kid woke up ill uh, again. So unfortunately I had to work from home today. Um, so the last time I saw you, uh, we were uh, in hopes to do a grant with the Burlington Northern Santa Fe. Come to find out. Um, they're not willing to take applications from courts for one reason or another. So we are pivoting to another grant opportunity. Uh, very similar. In fact, it actually allows us to ask for more funding. Um, up to twenty-five thousand, um, and that is through the First Fed Foundation. Um, and if I can screen share, I'll show you a little write-up that I provided, like I have. Are you able to see that?
Yes.
Okay. So uh, applications are due March first, uh, ranges from five thousand to twenty-five thousand. Um. We believe that we could um. Target the community support, uh, portion of the grant, uh, which serves the low to moderate income, um, community members of our. Um. Of our county, which, which is the majority of the population that probation serves. Um. And the funding would be used, um, like I said last time, would be for the two touchscreen um, iPads for paperless check-ins and reporting. Um. And allow for um. Audio um, reading as well, so that individuals who can't read and write can still um, complete these tasks. Um, security mounts to hold those iPads, um, as well as security cameras in our Goldendale Courthouse. Um, office. Uh, this would tie into the county courthouse uh, security camera system already. So it's not a huge um, process. And then two handheld metal detectors for both offices um, to be used as needed. Uh, and that e- expected fund request is about eight thousand. Now, I would like to just touch, um. Uh, there are some potential add-ons request. Uh, it would increase it about almost six thousand uh, for a request of six portable alcohol monitoring devices. This is a device that um, the courts often order people to do. Um, in lieu of uh, releasing from jail, uh, especially if it's like a D Y or alcohol-related offense. This requires the clients to blow into multiple times a day to ensure that they are staying clean and sober. They're really effective and really handy devices. However. Um, they're, they do cost the client money. Um, and we might be able to provide this at a lower cost to the clients if we buy them. Um, ourselves instead of farming them out to another company. As well as the three G P S ankle monitoring units. Uh, sometimes individuals are not medically um. Or physically able to be in jail. Uh, sometimes the course will allowed for ankle monitoring. And this allows us to see their whereabouts, control where, when and where they can go. Um, and but it does come with the cost. At this. Uh, point in time. Our department is contracted and providing this service. Uh, through two clients. Um, at a rate of twelve dollars a day, uh, we pay about. I think four dollars a day, uh, the clients pay the rest. If we were able to purchase it wholesale, then we could provide it at um, a potentially lower cost to some of the end of, um, indig- individuals. Um. And for people who aren't, um, then we would just collect pure profit at that time. Um. And so combined, uh, potential combined funding request would be about fourteen thousand. Um. So we're still negotiating uh, whether or not this uh, potential add-ons would be uh, eligible in that grant request. Um, if it's not, I am looking at other options. Uh, but we, if not, we would default to that eight thousand funding request. And so I just wanted to give you guys the update. Uh, and if I could get uh, approval once more uh, to. File a grant application to First Fed Foundation, we can get moving on that.
Uh, discussion.
How much time for the, the additional Courtney? How much time would that add to your guys' workload? If you're managing the G P S and you're managing the alcohol monitors and keeping them clean and all the, the maintenance that's required on those things versus farming it out where you know you don't have to?
Well, we already manage and, and clean and do the things with the G P S units. Uh, so it's nothing that we are already doing. The alcohol monitoring devices, we have some on hand. Uh, we provide them and help clients get set up for them, but when they, and we do some calibrations in my office depending on the agency and the unit they're using. Um. Depending on the time of the year or the amount of individuals on him, they're not too timely. Um, unless they're having some technology issues. That's the only time I've ever had where it's taking up. Uh, absorbed a lot of my time is when. The technology or the wifi is not connecting. Um. Other than that, the maintenance and the monitoring of it. Other than that, the maintenance and the monitoring of it is not that time consuming and it's something we're already doing.
I guess, uh, this Commissioner Christopher, I guess I just want to reiterate one more time. Thank you for looking at different granting opportunities to help. Uh, build your department and fund your department. Um. As we go through the budget times that we are currently in and going to be having, I. I find it very encouraging that at least one department is. Um, trying to help us, help them. So I just wanted to take a moment to say thank you.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah, we appreciate you Courtney and um, I appreciate the fact you're looking out for some of the um. Low income clients who sometimes don't have a way to do these things and then they're in more trouble.
That or they're, they're left with other uh, low to less options.
Yeah.
Um, or incarceration, which just adds to the county's budget. So um, and it's not always uh, necessary.
Right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you Courtney. Go forth and do good work.
Yes, Courtney, I believe you have a yes from all of us unless I hear otherwise. Which I don't, so it sounds like you have a yes from all of us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a great day.
All right, uh, next up is Commissioner miscellaneous reports and the first item. Which we have a room full of people here on, I'm assuming. Uh, you're not here for rules and procedures, so I'm gonna assume you're here for wastewater contract discussions. Um, I put this on the agenda. Because I believe as the uh, fiscal. The officials that were elected to be fiscal. Uh, and the majority of the county chooses that we act in a fiscally responsible way. Uh, I believe that it's well past time. Um, that the county puts the O and M contract out to bid publicly. Uh, to allow any and all eligible parties to submit. A bid of what they think is reasonable. Um, and then the board would be able to choose who they think. Um. Has the correct bid and or the ability to actually manage the facility. Um, because I guess I would say without public bid. Uh, you might find yourself in a position where your contract continuously goes up and up and up and up and up and up. And there's about nothing you have to say over it. Um. So I would like to see some competitive bidding with taxpayer dollars. And I was hoping to bring this before you to get a. A second vote to have some competitive bidding. Any discussion?
So this is separate from all the documents we received from Dallas Port Water District?
Uh, no idea. I got that handed out yesterday. Haven't looked at it.
Okay. Well, and then there was the one from October twenty.
I still have the pile on my desk. I looked at part of it, but haven't found the time to go through all of it because my plan was. Always in hopes of. Um. Getting done with the solar project and taking on the next project, which in my mind was this.
Go ahead.
Um, no, it's a long time coming. Um, and you've worked very hard on this project. Um. And I think Mr. Christopher is probably correct. Um, we have to legally do what's required of us for contracts. So probably this is the process we need to follow.
I, just for clarification and Jeff can correct me if I'm wrong. Potentially, we may not need to go to bid because we can have a existing year over year contract, which is what we've had on the previous. Or at least that's what I've been told. I have not checked for a legal opinion on that, but at least that's what I've been told. But I believe in my heart. As the steward of the taxpayer resource, the occasional. Bidding, public open bidding will. Potentially lower cost. Uh, from uh, one organization that is kind of monopolized and can charge whatever they want. Because they know we won't do anything about it. Um, and I'm not saying that Dallas Port wins the bid or gets the thing or we find them competent, competent to do the work. Uh, that's a whole further discussion. Uh, that I would like to entertain. Once we open it up to public bid, there might be a third entity. Who knows? The city of the Dals might be interested. Or whoever runs that one over there. I don't know. Public Works, you need to come to the mic, sir?
I just wanted to, I guess, get some clarification. It cannot be a low bid takes all. It has to be an RFPs. They have to meet certain qualifications. And it's, and it would be judged on not just the price. I mean, the price can be weighed. But it also has to be shown on experience level and qualifications and the ability. To do certain things.
Yep, nope, and that's good. I knew that. I didn't.
I know, I know. I'm just trying to help you out.
And I appreciate the help.
So uh, somebody doesn't come in and go, Commissioner Christopher, I'll do it for fifteen dollars. I should get.
Well, I'm not gonna do it for fifteen dollars. I'll bid a hundred grand and then I'll quit this job and then run it into the ground.
Yes, exactly.
So, right? So, right. I, I, yep, but that is, that is essentially the process that I would like us to move forward with. Uh, in a timely manner so that then we can get on to the months of debate on where we want to land after we do that.
Um. Uh, we could put the RFP together. It will, I'll be honest, we're, we're a little bit backlog. It's just the holiday season.
It's gonna be snow to plow.
Um, we have flooding now. Remember, we just talked about that. So we probably won't be ready for that until I'm gonna guess maybe first part of next year, honestly.
But, but if I wait until the first part of next year to have this discussion.
Well, yeah.
Then it would be March or April.
Well, exactly.
If, if the board so chooses to uh, agree with me on this issue, it would be nice to. Let's say pencil in a first meeting of next year discussion that we can at least know where you're at in the process. And keep you to timelines for. Um, you know, weekly or biweekly updates as you do your report to keep us. Apprised of where we're at in the situation.
Yes, and at that point I would like, you know, we can have, I'd like to have a workshop without audience involvement. Because, I mean, when you put out an RFP. You can do it publicly, but that's tech, I mean, to actually put the, the package out, that's fine. But when we're talking about what we want in the package. We don't need public input for that. No, no offense to the public, but. That is not something you bring the public into, especially if you have people that are gonna actually supply. That's considered unfair advantage.
Which, which would, would include the PUD as.
Right, exactly. They would not be part of it.
In that just as well.
Yes, nobody would be. It would be between Public Works.
And what we want out of the project.
Yes, exactly. Just trying to get all the cards out on the table.
Yep, yep.
And I will leave it at that.
Discussion.
So you're looking for a full RFP, not an RFQ? So you want the full proposal, not just your qualifications. You want a full proposal. And then um, we just did this with the Hood River Bridge with the owner's rep, which is kind of like the same management. Um. And it was a. Gordy was involved. Um, it was a four month process just to put it out. And then we had to do interviews and everything else and it's a, it's a major undertaking. And so I'm guessing it'll take. Six months from start to finish.
Wouldn't you know, I'm still gonna be here at the end of next year. So even if it takes a year, I'll still be here.
Just setting the expectations on, on the amount of work hours that's involved in it. Um. And uh, I have no problem, you know, looking for those that are qualified who want to operate a wastewater system. You'll likely get um, uh, the third party um, companies, the private companies. A little bit on it as well. I know, you know, they've done that in other areas. So there's, there's a lot that'll go into it. Um, but I think the, it'll take quite a bit of our time in coming up with those, what we're looking for. We've already got the contract with the, and the expectations that'll probably help make it a little easier. Um, but in terms, I have, I don't have a problem. Um. Um, I know with what I'm rea- what I was reading this morning here, I've got a lot of questions for the PUD that I'd like responses to currently.
I.
Um. In, at least, you know. Seeing, seeing those responses, cause it's, it's one thing to make statements. It's another thing to hear the other side of the story. Um.
I would also, uh, speaking of hearing the other side of the story. Have we officially received their O and M budget for next year yet? I mean, it, it's unfortunate that we have to approve our budget without ever seeing their budget. Uh, but in my uh, landfill gas discussions. Um, with uh, the PUD which they denied.
Um, I was gonna ask an update later.
Well, I didn't go in it with any expectations that they would accept. I went into it. Uh, looking to garner information and it was quite successful. Um, with that, the PUD uh, told me that they have one and a half employees and I could swear the last time I looked at the contract. They were charging us for three or four. So I would be very curious to look at the budget to see how many were actually being charged for. Um, and, and I think. Part of this project, um. I also believe this board might want to look at a, let's call it a forensic examination. Of the current charges being billed. But we'll go as one thing at a time as we go through the project.
Yeah, I think it's timely and I'd like to see it move forward so we can get the process moving.
Hey, that's a two vote. I'm not sure yes or no. I, 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 you, I think you're a yes, but I don't wanna put words in your mouth. Thank you. Little word clarity. I think that's a yes. If it isn't, correct me if I'm wrong. You have three yeses to move forward to. Thank you. No, I apologize. I wasn't trying to call you out there. I just didn't wanna.
I thought.
Vote for you without.
Thought I was pretty clear. And so this is just direction um, to staff. It doesn't need a motion.
No, correct. I believe you don't need a motion for that. It's just direction and, and yeah, if you could. I understand we're looking at the first of the year. The public now understands we're looking at the first of the year. If you can, like I said, just keep us kind of a biweekly update. On your ETA, so if it switches to the middle of January, we're aware of it.
We will, and like Commissioner Anderson said, yes, it will be a lengthy process. You're doing an RFP. To talk about a ten million dollar uh, asset, asset that could cost the taxpayers a ton of money. If it, if it's give, if the people don't do what it's supposed to be done, somebody runs.
That's discussions after.
Right, that will be discussions of how we draft the RFP. And that's where we'll need to get together and workshop and determine. I mean, I have a pretty good idea what the RFP will look like. But then we'll need how we're gonna score the RFP.
Gloring is.
Well, in.
Cause each thing is weighted on certain things.
Right, but I. Is there an opportunity? And I'm just thinking outside the box, cause I'm not a politician. I've never done this weird procedure. Is there a prop opportunity to have an outside consultant weigh? The criteria and judge it for themselves, an independent party that's not related to any of the people that are applying. So that you get a complete non-biased opinion of everything.
My suggestion will be that you bring in an outside consultant to actually sit on the committee. And score it, help score.
But should that outside consultant also be a part of writing the RFP if that's. What we actually plan to do.
We could do that. I mean, you know, I.
Or is it not needed?
It gets expensive.
It gets expensive really fast.
So is paying the bills on a ten million.
Right. I will float it by somebody that is the expert in this, that does these things and is highly regarded by DOE.
That's good. As long as they have no contacts with, no, they don't go to the Christmas party of anybody that's related to this. I'm good with it.
No, they don't go to the Christmas. That's related to anybody.
I think that gives us a fair, unbiased, transparent. Process for everybody involved and nobody can later bitch that there was politics.
Yes, and they also bring the expert.
Cause I'm not an expert.
The expert um, tells you who has the qualifications and who doesn't. Um, and again, you know, there, there, there's a couple firms out there. That do this, that specialize in this kind of thing. Not specialized doing RFPs, but specialized wastewater treatment plans. So that's who we would bring on and I could work with that. As far as drafting it, we could draft it and you know, RFPs are kind of the same. There's different, different elements. But they're all based on the same thing. We do them all the time because we're required by law to do.
I know you're eventually gonna get me one for planning.
I know, I'm working on one as we speak. They take a little while, especially when you're drafting them from square one.
And I'm, I'm sure you have grant season coming up on you too, so.
We have all kinds of stuff. We have another RFP we gotta do though also for the airport. So that one is less difficult, but. They take some time. They're not the end of the world time. But again, if I had everybody staff still here and weren't on vacation or sick. Now we're playing, everybody's getting sick, so.
Well, we appreciate you and everything your staff does and I believe you have consensus from the board to.
We will move forward.
Forward with kind of the outline that I've discussed.
Yep, we will do that.
And we'll hopefully eventually get to an answer eventually.
Yes, we will.
Perfect. Thank you, sir. It's hot in here today. I'm gonna take the jacket off. Any further discussion on the. Water treatment facility, cause I'm sure the general public doesn't wanna sit here and listen to the rest of our boring meeting if we're not gonna talk about that issue.
Um, I just would mention that I received this big packet when I got to the office and I'm starting to go through it. Um, I haven't made my outlines on it yet, so I can help speak to it.
Yeah, I would, I would agree. I went through the previous monster packet. Um, this one came in, I think around noon yesterday. I, I haven't, honestly, I was in that under canvas hearing all day yesterday. So I have enough at time. Uh, but that is my hope now that Silver's off my plate, that I have time to read all these documents and all future documents. And um, and kind of get this one resolved.
And thank you for the, for the packet. I appreciate it. It's been a lot of documents over the past year and so this is more concise for me.
I know you wanna talk, but I'm not gonna let you because it's not public comment period. And if I let you, then somebody else comes in the room tomorrow and says that I let you talk. So. I would say feel free to reach out to any of us an email or a phone call or call at nine o'clock next Tuesday and. Uh, but you know, we're all available. Um.
So there's also a cone of silence when you start moving on these things?
And that's the other thing I was gonna warn them of. Once we start. Um, actually doing the focus groups to, or the, the work groups to actually go out with the RFP. Uh, you will probably be hearing us say, don't talk to me kind of thing. Um, so that we can try to uh, maintain our unbiasedness. Um, so with that, when that happens, if there is more documentation we need. Um, or anything else, we will reach out to any parties we think we need more documentation on. But I will tell you at least for me, once we get to there, all of your packets will be just stuck on a table and not looked at. Until we're through that process to make sure that I stay unbiased for when I make the decision. Anything else? Okay, nothing else Dallas Port Waiter wastewater related. Moving on, uh, next item we have, thank you all for coming and thank you all for being concerned with your communities as much as I am.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you too.
Happy holidays, sir. I'll get yelled at if I say Merry Christmas on a microphone.
I heard that.
No, right? File a formal complaint with the ethics board. Thank y'all. Uh, moving on to rules of procedure for Clicktana County Commissioners Discussion. Uh, this was the packet that I don't know. I probably should have reprinted them for you, so we all had them in front of us.
Oh, I have it. I just didn't bring it in from my room.
Do you wanna grab it or do you have comments or I just hoping, I mean, we have hour fifteen minutes literally before lunch. So we can, we can kind of look at it, make notes and I can make changes if needed and. Um, I still need to run through it and make sure I have pages in the right page and. Uh, it's nowhere near. Well, it's pretty near final, but. I need to make sure I don't have any grammars. There's questions, uh, wait for that. I was gonna say there's questions I have that it's like if Tuesday falls on the week of Christmas Eve or New Year's Eve, the regular meeting that week should be held on. Everybody else did it on the Monday after, but so many people take the Monday as a holiday. That I'm like, we need to figure out what we wanna do there and. Um, that, so I put it as Thursday. Uh, instead of the Monday or the Wednesday, so it's, you know, little things like that can be tweaked to. But that's why I said it's kind of nice to literally go through it.
So Christmas Eve, um, I think we usually have like an early work, like we let people go early, but it's still a workday. And so what we're saying um is, is we wouldn't have our meeting on that early work holiday. We would do it on Thursday. If it falls on a Tuesday.
That's right, because I don't want, if, if New Year's Eve or Christmas Eve falls on Tuesday, we obviously can't have it on Wednesday because that would be New Year's Day or Christmas. So we need to figure out when we're having it, whether that's Monday or in my opinion, it would be the Thursday of that week. I just don't know if that throws a wrench in the payroll warrants or something, so we would need to check. I mean, if we had to do it on the Monday, I'm, I'm fine with that. It's just not.
Before.
Right, I would just, do you have a copy of this? Okay, I would make a copy or I would put a little note next to that one, which is rule number one, meetings is number two. And put a note to check with auditor to see if she has any. Issues.
I've looked at my packet home, but I can.
Sure.
Yeah, use that or she can make you a copy.
All my notes are at the house, but I can still.
We wanna just go through it?
Yeah, I, I mean, yeah, might as well.
Okay, um, I don't know if we should call the Thursday's workshop, workshop session. Because every meeting is a regular business meeting. Um, I was trying to get away from having what's known as workshops. Uh, but that's just my thoughts. Um, this is on B, page one, rule A.
Does that limit us to Thursdays too? That's another question.
Um, rule A, you mean rule B.
Yeah, rule one, section B.
Okay, um, technically I don't mind changing that because. It still doesn't mean we have to take verbal comment on a Thursday. As long as it's posted that they can submit written comment, which is what we do now. So technically we can take action on Thursdays right now. We just choose not to.
Correct.
Um, so if we wanna change the wording to that, it doesn't change technically anything. Uh, in our abilities to do anything that we do now, it would just be a wording.
So that's where, but.
What wording would you recommend changing?
Well, Commissioner, Commissioner Zoller was right. What we're saying is, is that we will hold workshops when needed on Thursdays at nine A M. But there's other days, there's Wednesdays and Fridays based on people's agendas, um, schedules, you know, what meetings we're on. So I don't know if we wanna box ourselves in there with that.
We could say pre-designated days. When needed.
So is your recommendation to literally remove that? Or to change the wording to something in the neighborhood of we will try to have or. Try to have it on Thursdays, but it could be on different.
I think the, the, the way I would do it is extensions of the regular business meeting may be on Wednesdays, Thursdays or Friday.
So you're not even gonna call it a workshop? Okay, extensions of the regular business meeting may be on.
Wednesdays, Thursdays or Friday. But usually held on Thursdays. I just, when you're creating rules, you're creating sideboards that box you in and. Then the next thing you know, you're having to amend your rules or suspend your rules every week in order to do something based on the meetings that. We may have with other.
Okay, I have made a note to make that change. Special meetings, it's, it's pretty much just saying what we do now.
I, the only thing I had that is, is um, I could eliminate the words telegram or fax.
Um, that the wording is just, I guess I would say the wording that's compliant with the state law that's already in place, so I just left the same word. Which is what the other cities and counties did.
Right, but we can always be more specific.
So you're saying remove telegram and fax?
Right.
And say by email or, so just remove those two.
Yeah.
I'm fine with that too.
Yeah, I'm good.
Unless you wanna sell me a personal telegram. Telegram.
Um, page two, under D quorum, it says uh, with rule one dot E, I think it should say rule one dot F.
We moved on to meeting location.
Well, that's, that's kind of will the quorum thing I'm still trying to look at.
Okay.
I would, I would actually change that to one E and.
That's fine.
Good catch. Media meeting okay.
The one, number one. Locks it to this building and we've been asked. Over time that if we could hold a meeting in White Salmon at Pioneer Center.
So the Benton County has dealt with this for many years and um, you're required to have. Your board meetings in the location of the county court.
Okay.
That's changed.
Did it change? Oh, with that new legislation?
You, you used to be able to do like one meeting outside of your location, but uh, now they, it. It's my understanding, you can do it whenever you want. Uh, wherever you want, you just have a, a home base. But you can do as many as you want, wherever you want. But with that, I do think there is cause to add. To that wordage.
Just in case, you just don't wanna go back and change.
The board meetings or workshop will be held in this chamber, but it uh. Uh, and then add something where, except where noted by the B O C C or something, or except where I change.
And do we wanna eliminate the word workshops?
Got it. Workshops is, what, what's the wordage you want me to use at the end of the session? Except when referenced? Or posted or? What's the wordage?
So it's, it's pretty simple though. I think you could just um eliminate number one. And because it says all board meetings and special meetings will be held in a physical location where the public can attend, except in specific situations where an emergency's been declared. And just leave it at that. You get rid of number one and then.
Yeah, but you have to explain where that location, number one falls. I mean, or, or you just said it will be, like I said, unless an emergency exists, we haven't declared where that location is yet.
Usual, usual meetings will be held at the Golden Dale one fifteen unless otherwise noted by the commissioners.
Unless otherwise noted. By, I don't usually say commissioners in here. I'll say by the board. I will add that to the end of the sentence and same deal when I add or change things, I'll make them red and put strikers. So you'll be able to easily know.
Please use track changes.
Um, don't ask me to get too, yeah, technical. I'll, I'll make them red.
Well, if you make them red, then somebody else has to go through rather than just accept it. So you just turn on track change.
Oh, if, if I was smart enough to do something like that, you're lucky I got this. I did add the notice of remote attendance should be provided to the board clerk not less than twenty-four hours before the scheduled start time of the meeting. Um, and the board clerk should designate the immediate or tell the presiding officer of the remote meeting. Look, if, if somebody can't be here for some reason, I don't care if they're on a last second vacation or they're sick or what else. I'm not gonna like, you know, call a board foul and try to shame them publicly. But it is very nice for whoever the board chair is to know in advance who's gonna be there and who's not. So while this isn't necessarily necessary, I think it's polite. Um, which is the reason why I put her.
Could you put a comment after um, not less than twenty-four hours short of an emergency before the scheduled start time of the meeting?
I need smaller sticky notes.
Because if somebody gets up in the morning and has COVID.
I don't want you getting me sick.
No. Um, so after twenty-four hours, put a comment, but short of an emergency.
It said, it, it, but it says should, doesn't say shall.
Right.
Okay.
But it's fine.
Okay.
Like I said, I, I, I worded it, so it's like you really can't discipline for it. It's just a polite thing.
Okay, do you just wanna leave it the way it is?
Yeah, I mean, there's.
Yep.
Should, it should is not a disciplinary, yeah, it's just best practices.
That works.
But same deal, if you guys wanna edit, I'm fine with editing too, so I don't wanna be like, no, don't change them. I didn't see anything else on that piece. Might be. An issue.
Uh, next page, number five, conducts of meetings, vice chairs, V I C E, not V I S E.
Page five, where?
Presiding officer, vice chair, so with a C, not an S.
So obviously nobody had any issues at the top. I did a bit of price down there, didn't I? And these things just essentially follow Robert's rules, so parliamentary procedures, there's nothing in there that, that changes. You can see the one. Red. Mark. And that is, I guess, in here for debate. Most agencies that use these, everything I found was comment is comment on the agenda. One city. Um, had a set. Like, we will call it the first Tuesday of the month for us. Uh, for this example anyway, where they allow comments off the agenda. But only pertaining to items. That are related to county business. I threw that in there just so I remember to at least have that discussion. But I, I worry of doing it that way makes it too confusing for which people on which day they're allowed to comment on. Corporations or whatever they wanna comment on. Because it's my opinion, feel free to reach out to a commissioner and email or phone call and have the discussion. And if you have a set day where they're allowed to talk about this and a set day where they're allowed to talk about that, it's just gonna cause way too much confusion. To the general public. That's my, but I left it red, hoping to strike it through, but I wanted to have a discussion.
Well, community forums would to me be like, we, we all get together for like. An evening meeting or something like this, like a town hall. And so at a town hall, the chair is, that's still the chair. Calls it to order. It's a town hall. We have to take minutes of it. So a community forum, that's how I saw it.
Yeah, okay.
So I actually didn't have any issues with it.
Okay, well, I won't turn that red and put a strike through it. I'll turn it black and you'll never see it again.
I've seen it every time I read it.
Um, well, I know, but I can't edit that one and turn it red and put a strike through because we're leaving it in and making it permanent. This is all Robert's rules of order. Any other issues on that page before I flip it?
Just to, just to note that. We, in much of our debate and discussion, we don't follow Robert's rules. Because it's only a board of three and it's not a board of fifty, like, you know, when we're in. Spokane, and so a lot of times there's, there is interruptions or there is, you know, you talk. And so a lot of times there's there is interruptions or there is, you know, you talk. This two people talk, one person waits and it goes back and forth. And so. Um, if we wanna do this, just note that we're gonna be changing the way we communicate and style of communication and it's gonna be far more formal.
Um, I would say yes and no because technically the only person or people that are gonna hold us to. That rule. Is gonna be us. So technically, if we're having open debate or if I interrupt you. And you or Lori wants to scream point of order. He interrupted me and I'm gonna have to say, yeah, I could have. I ruled in your favor. I'm sorry. Uh, I I don't. I don't see that happening. Well, so I think we still can have. I think we still have the open debate. This just gives us the opportunity. For a member, if they think the debate is getting extensive. Uh, and or there needs to be a conclusion to the debate, which technically they can already just call the question. But it gives us some some decorum. That. I I guess I'd say, I I'm not making this rule that we. Have to actually follow the boring parliamentary procedure and have a parliamentarian. And get into what the definition is is and whatever else. Again, it's just to me, it's it's the standard. This was all copied from every other place. Wasn't my. That I understand it might. Make us go through a little more formal process. But I also looked at. Getting us a little more formal process will be more. Cohesive. Less chaotic. Uh, and in the end have a better showing or representation of.
So I I have no problem with it. I just want everybody in in saying that we'll be the only ones calling on this. As I I think that's not at all. If we have rules of procedure. The public or at least a couple of members of the public is going to be calling us on it every time we step out of line following our rules.
Potentially.
So just be aware.
But I they called me. Out of line last week by saying my A D U is illegal too and. It has all the permits from the county, so I'm just used to being called out by certain members. And I whether we do this or don't do this, won't stop those members from saying whatever they wanna say.
Okay, I just just making I'm just making the point. We it was good discussion. Um. I noticed in rule four, the order of business, um, point of order was not included on that. Or not order of business, never mind. Where is that? Uh, precedents of motions.
Which are you at now?
Uh, I'm jumping. I I mean. So I'm on rule. That would be rule number five, precedents.
Oh, you've skipped.
But.
Page seven entirely.
No, I was looking. I was looking at page seven, but. I meant to talk about page eight.
Transgressions was again just copied from other ones, but it might be. Important when we. Uh, let's bring up a transgression that I have. Where we had members of the public coming before the previous board asking for them to discipline me. Um, this kind of explains the powers or the limited powers that we do have for such a. If something was called to whatever. And I spelled vice wrong on that page too. I'll go back and check everything. Um, like I said, this came from a city council. So they didn't have. Chair or vice chair. They have council members and. Some other designation. Um, anything else on that?
And the only thing I think is is uh. The additional consequences may include, I think that's a. A bit of that, so. Uh, it's halfway through at the bottom of that. So you have to be, you have to be a little bit careful that. Um, how do you make that fair and consistent? Um, because you can have in essence two gang up on one. Um, and make one transgression, you know, you gotta leave versus somebody else. You're just like, oh, we're just gonna reprimand you. How do you set that up other? I just pointing it out that it's there. I'd hate to try to create the. The. The chart of saying what's worthy of what, but just pointing it out that it's it gets nuanced.
I I appreciate that, but I also. I I feel in my heart of hearts that two are not gonna gang up on one. Um, and that if this board decides to use its disciplinary powers. To kick some commissioner out of a room. Or whatever else. I would certainly hope they can defend their actions to the local newspaper and radio station. In that the general public doesn't feel that those two are not out of line. Or they're gonna be held accountable in the court of public opinion. So. While I understand the point being made. Um, I don't worry so much about. Um, bullying. Using the rules. Um, because you're gonna have to be accountable when you try to do so, and I think the general public will. All said member of bully. And. Uh, make the victim a hero. So I um. Are you worried about that? I mean, if I'm the only one, we can.
I mean, I just look at what Franklin County's had to go through and so.
Yeah, but they would never get two votes to get somebody out of room.
Should watch some of their videos.
I have. It it's the. I guess I would say it would have been nice for them to have board rules.
Right, and I look at this and think that would be a pretty extreme situation.
Yeah.
And it'd be a situation out of control. And if I had to ask for that, I would certainly hope that there was a board rule somewhere that I could rely back on. That I could do that.
And it's it's not there. I guess I would say. We have not, we've had contentious debate. But we have never. Had. Essentially what they deal with on a fairly regular basis in Franklin County. You may or may not be. Uh, may or may not be aware of what goes on. Uh, but. I I do feel that board. It might be in their best interest, um. If they had such a thing where they can at least. Vote by majority that a member is out of line. Now, whether they wanna kick him out of a room or not. I mean, that's up to any board that sits here. And again, you're gonna be. Your case is gonna be tried in the court of public opinion, so. Uh, but at least. I guess I'd say like you have you said, if that ever happens with, again, I don't see it happening with one of us, cuz there's never been any evidence to. Technically need to kick anybody out of the room. Because the switch is here. It doesn't mean it can't happen.
Correct.
If. A radical on any political ideology is not sitting in one of these chairs. So this gives. The board of the whole. Which is what we are. The the power to.
Just calm the situation back down.
Yes, have a little control over somebody if they're off the rails.
Um. Okay, I was just bringing that up as as. Good discussion. Uh, order of business.
I I guessed. Feel free to change it.
No.
No, no, I was just gonna say the regular order of business shall be as follows cuz like today. We had um executive session early. Um, we had in so.
So you wanna add the word regular?
Yeah, the regular order of business shall be as follows because when we write an agenda or have an agenda that's different, I don't wanna have to suspend the rules in order to do that.
Okay, so add the word the regular.
Yes.
Got it. Um, staff. Have you had a chance to look at this order of business? Part of this to see if I have. Anything that you wanna move from one thing to the other thing? And again, we can change. This isn't a resolution or an ordinance or, you know.
Right, and there there may be times that things will be to be moved.
But that's, I think, where he said the using the word regular, this is the main order of business, but if we need to move it for a reason. By saying the regular, it allows. I just didn't know if you wanted to move any of this now.
Yeah.
Cuz I got it in the wrong spot kinda thing. I wide open. Like you said, I I used best guess based off our. Last month of trying to put together agendas. Well, that's why I kinda threw it in there, so. If you did it later, you could damn near put department update wherever the heck you want and not be out of order. On the agenda. That's why it's that's in there so many times. Uh, five in the. The motions is again just, uh. It was copy and pasted from others. It's just kind of the. Basics on Robert Schules. Uh, now we're on the page that wait. Do you had an issue on or was that a previous page?
Um, what?
What was the one that you had an issue on that we hadn't been to yet?
Oh, uh, point of order. On the precedence emotions.
Um, add point of order, is that what you're saying?
Uh, yes.
Okay, I don't have uh to call the question either. You wanna add that too?
Well, so that was what I was just looking at. So there's to lay on the table, which is not debatable, but then you also have to postpone indefinitely, which is debatable. And to lay on the table lays a pending question aside temporarily when something more urgent has arisen.
Correct. I mean, we we technically do that all the time. We just don't make formal motions to do so. There's things that we've decided, all right, we're not touching this one. Which technically, I guess, somebody, we can either just not put it on the agenda, which is what we do now. Or you can make a formal motion to table it.
Right.
I I thought about removing a lot of that mumbo jumbo that we don't use. Um, but if you wanna remove them, fine. If you wanna add to it, I'm fine. I guess the main kicker is if you wanna add by point of order, I need to know. Order. And call the question should be in there.
I mean, so this is this gets really, really weird and I don't know where you pulled this from, but um in essence, so we could be in the middle of. Uh, a motion. And the precedence emotions would be you could make a motion to adjourn. It's not debatable and then have to go to a vote.
Correct.
And right then and there. Does that make sense?
That that is Robert's rules of order. Nobody usually. Does such a thing. Um, it's not that it's against the rule or. Um. Unethical or anything like that. It's just bad. I mean, if somebody makes a motion, technically, why would you need to adjourn unless you're refusing to second? Or refusing to second in order to have debate. But then again, if somebody makes a motion and nobody says a word, it just died. There is no debate. It died quickly. So the only reason I would think somebody would want to make a motion. And then somebody's like, I adjourn. The the chair would have to be the one to say I adjourn. Um.
The reason I'm thinking about this is.
But then you two could vote to remove the chair in the next meeting and you had the problem.
I'm thinking of this more as if you remember in twenty twenty one, when we had the issue when the people came in. And the chair made a motion to adjourn the meeting. Or the chair moved to adjourn the meeting. I don't even think there was a motion. It was just adjournment.
Technically, all of our meetings, the chair can adjourn, even if that's not our current procedure.
That's.
We just do it out of, right, we just do it out of kindness, in case anybody has any last minute topics they wanna bring up. Um, but technically, yeah, when you adjourn, it's up to the chair to adjourn or the member can call for an adjourn. Uh. But that that's again Robert's rules and every entity follows Robert's rules, so I would hate to. Put it on our rules that were not.
Okay, I don't have any other with precedence emotions currently.
Okay, so I'm I'm gonna add point of order and call the question. And then we'll go from there. I do. Um, wanna call the. Rule number eleven or sorry, number eleven under rule five A eleven, motion to reconsider. That is Robert's rules of order and. I guess I'll use an example on. How this has not affected us, but could it? The wrong person is sitting in the chair. When someone makes a motion for something. Uh, and there's a vote, let's call it so. In the majority rules. The one should not be able to constantly bring back that vote up for discussion. It's been old. And I was that rule. Correct, the first solar mortuary reconsideration. I shouldn't be able to pose a motion to reconsider it every meeting. I would almost call that extruction. To hijack the meeting to keep bringing my topic back. It has to be according to Robert's rules of order, which is again, I have it in there. It has to be one of the people that voted yes on it. To bring it back. Because.
Yeah.
Ethically, I think it's bad behavior if I was outvoted by the previous board on the solar thing. To bring it up every week and try the motion again and again and again and and argue it over and over and over again. That's just. Contentiousness. Uh, which is why I didn't did do it, but we're making these rules in hopes that a future board are obviously asked to do it. And again, I will. Go back to our neighboring county. Um, so why that doesn't necessarily need to be here? I think it's important. Cuz that is Robert's rules of order and that's the rule period. I think it's nice to have it in there, so any future commissioner looking at it kind of. Understands.
It does say who voted with the prevailing side.
Correct.
So in here it says a motion to reconsider having been put and lost, meaning that you moved to reconsider. You lost the vote to reconsider shall not be removed renewed by either the mover or any other member of the board. So what it's saying is is it you only get one motion to reconsider.
So if I.
And that's only at the next meeting.
So if I lost the. Let's say this solar mortuary vote, I don't get to bring a motion to reconsider. You or solder could have brought a vote to reconsider. Of which then I would have been second. And we would have had the discussion. But so it allows you, one of the people on the winning side. To take a week to think about it and come back and change the road if they so want to. But it it's up to the winning side to wanna do that. It's not the. The person that feels aggrieved or whatever that gets to throw a temper tantrum. And again, that's just standard Robert's rules of order. That's not my.
But the. The motion to reconsider can has to be brought by one, but the. The person who lost can second the motion.
Correct. The only thing I learned new in doing that is that it says it has to be brought the next week. I thought it could be brought whenever. But. That that part of it's news to me. Uh, but because that's the way it's written in Robert's rules of order, new fourth edition, blah, 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 and I. I left it there.
So.
That was pulled from another city council.
So there's another piece here, which almost is different. Any member of the board, including the presiding officer, shall have the right to change his or her vote in order to be on the prevailing side. At any time before final actions taken on the next ensuing item of business taken up by the board.
Correct.
So at any time after you voted for something and you have a change of conscience in the next.
Correct.
Fifteen minutes, you can change your vote.
Until we take another vote.
Right. And that's the day of.
Well, yes, the day of and then we take another.
So I don't know if that should be cons- under motion degree, consider or not, cuz I don't think you have to make the motion. You just have to announce.
Right. Right. If you decide you don't wanna be on the. Um. Minority side of a vote. Minority side of a vote, after the vote, you can switch vote. But you're on the majority side. That's essentially what that's. And you just do that by announcing it. Before the next vote on the next issue.
So that is only to be on the prevailing side. It's not to actually change your vote.
It's not to change the outcome of the votes.
That would need a motion to reconsider.
Then you would need a motion to reconsider. Parliamentary procedure. I hope we're boring all of you at home.
So the next one, um. Something to be just cognizant of, no ordinance or resolution shall be read until the county attorney has the opportunity to review as to form in the.
Which which page are you on now?
Rule seven, second.
Hey, can you just strike resolution? Yes, that's a policy.
No rule should be suspended by the majority vote of the board members present at a meeting.
No, no, rule seven. Second period.
Uh, so you're on rule seven, sorry, not rule six. Okay, so you're on no ordinance or resolution shall be read until the county attorney has had the opportunity to review. As to form and legality. Is that what you have? Um, I will admit. That I have changed the wording on this. Uh, I added the word opportunity. Add the opportunity. The rule that this came from. Was no ordinance or resolution shall be read. In other words, we can't take action until the county attorney has approved. As reviews to form. I changed that as to have the opportunity because I do not want an elected official that's not. The ones elected. To be able to be obstructionary and stop us from discussing. Or instituting a policy that they choose they disagree with. And if they want to stop us from doing it, they can just not give us a legal. The way it was worded before I changed. So I want to, it, I want to provide them adequate opportunity. To weigh in, but not be afforded to, nope, not going to give you an opinion. And now we violate the rule if we take up the matter.
We don't send resolutions for legal review now, do we? Because they're.
They don't have to be. Uh, yeah, they don't have to.
So I have kind of a problem with that because we're going to be stacking work.
So technically, yes, the word resolution should come out, but ordinance should stay.
Ordinance should stay.
I I agree with you on removing resolution. Do you have a problem with that? We don't send resolutions now for reviews.
We don't need to add to the work.
Alright, I'm gonna redline that. So no ordinance shall be read until the county attorney has had the opportunity. To review as to form.
So that's part of the checks and balances of government. And ordinances, you usually have a signing area for reviewers to form. Um, and legality um, from the prosecuting attorney, changing that to having an opportunity. Um, I would need a P A opinion request on that to whether or not that's even legal.
Well, I give you the, my. Since the prosecuting attorney says he needs either the chairman's discretion or the board's vote. To get a legal opinion. I'm giving you. My go ahead. To asking for a legal opinion. If you need a legal opinion.
Well, I think what we're gonna need is a legal opinion. I'm a hold on. I mean, this is setting up our rules. If I want to make sure that none of these rules are. Um, potentially setting us up for. A lawsuit either from another elected or from anything that we've done. And I appreciate that you're bringing these forward and that you're using what other people have done. But one thing I have found is is that cities kind of can go on their own ways in other counties without being fully in accordance with the law.
I I have no problem with that. And I was entirely planning on sending this over for at least. Giving him the opportunity consult if he so chooses. And some of these that were taken from other cities. Uh, reference uh, state code or court cases. Um, that he may want to update, change, strike through. I'm g- giving the opportunity and he might even say this has nothing to do with me. I don't want to look at it, but. Yes, Mel, the I was never gonna not give him that opportunity. Um, so we'll just need to make a a note. For a separate legal review. On opportunity. Anything else on that page in B F M?
Aiden, I'm sorry. I know Lori probably has hers all marked up, so we're going through my markup. Um, next one for me, amendments to the rules. Amendments to these rules shall be made by resolution and shall require two readings. Do you wanna explain why you require the two readings?
That was just what everybody else had. I thought the same thing when I read it. Uh, but that, and then I think I went and looked at city to comment and they had kind of the same way. And I'm like, oh, well, I guess that's. I guess I would say that gives everybody the opportunity to. Take a week to think through it before they want to change the rules. And can't just willingly, willingly change the rule whenever they want. Uh, to meet their own personal nature, depending on what meeting. And I think. That is why they have it. But. Um, I can see how you might need to change the rule. For a meeting and then somebody could technically say, you can't do that because you didn't have two readings.
So there's the suspension of the rules.
Right, but this is amendments to the rules. This is if you want to add something else in. Not if you want to suspend the rules or whatever, you can do that. I'm just saying if somebody wants to add something in. Requiring two readings makes sense because now you have to think it through. Um, and have hopefully a week to do your homework and and think it through on whether you want to add that rule. And so. I don't see a foul, but if you guys think there's a foul on.
I just want to bring it up for discussion.
Okay. Um, I did change proclamations. Uh, it now reads its policy of the board of commissioners to consider requests for proclamations and events. Um. When they obtain to events persons, organizations. I did not change that part. I did not change the beginning part. I get through to try to figure out where I changed the change. Most of these we, I know we already kind of do. Uh, or try to get people to give us the proclamations in advance so we don't get last minute. I did add proclamations must not be of a political nature. Or be politically divisive to the citizens of like that county. I added that. So feel free to pick it out. But um, in our current uh, state of affairs. Um, and obviously, uh. Political nature, political divisive, uh divisive is up to interpretation of the board. And it would be up to the board to say, no, not that. So it does say the board chair will determine if the proper, uh, if the proclamation meets the intent. When there is uncertainty in making this determination, the board chair will consult with the board of commissioners for guidance. In other words, if you're not positive, okay, so if a neo-Nazi hate group wants a proclamation, I I think I can take it on good authority that you're probably okay with me telling them no. Um, good. Um, if I'm not sure if this one's political or not. I would hope the board chair would reach out to their seatmates and get an opinion and then. Move forward with whatever that opinion is. And by all means. If the board chair is acting out of line and told some group, no. Um, without consulting the rest of the board, then the board has the authority to remove that person's chair. There's your consequence.
I think you'll you'll probably see this within the next, I mean, politically divisive. So now we can go to L G B T Q plus. Um, rights, we can go, you know, there's right to life things that are, you know, it's very politically divisive within the county.
So we shouldn't be doing proclamations for any of them.
So that's, I just want to make sure that's, that's where you're going.
That's the intent I have is that if one side can say that's political. We are not doing a proclamation. We'll. Not doing a proclamation. One side of it.
I've got no problem.
Politically divisive.
Right, what do we do a proclamation for this year?
We usually do proclamations for nine one one emergency dispatcher. We.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, Red Cross Week. Most of the time now, I have. Requested changes. To proclamations because occasionally you'll get a, let's say a Red Cross proclamation that throws in a per political line. And it's like, no, remove that line. And then I'll accept the rest. And. And we even had one, I think it was my first year where I, it wasn't brought for beforehand. I never saw it. I just saw it on the day back. And I'm like, I I can't sign that because of that line. You know, and I think Lee ran in and just typed up another one and took that line out. We all signed it, sent it back. Cause most of the people do the proclamation, submit their.
Yep.
Um, so if you want to like take most of it and remove a sentence or two, that's fine too. Um, just don't get political where somebody else is gonna call on Tuesday and be mad at me for. Doing a proclamation is the purpose and the reason why I put that in there. And then hopefully in putting that in there, you'll also find that when it comes to presentations. Uh, people that want a presentation before the board.
So if we want to go down to that, um. The presentation shall not exceed fifteen minutes in length, I think.
Notice it's red.
I, so I said, I was.
What everybody else had. Um, and I thought that to be. Pretty damn low. Um, I don't know that it's an hour, but I can easily see a half an hour.
So maybe we change it to no presentation shall be excessive in length.
Well, yeah, but then I don't want to have to judge what's accessible. Um, and I'm thinking of one presentation that I attended before I took office. It was two hours long. And was. I am refusing to tell you in a public meeting. Um, but no one from the board had the courage to tell them, thank you for your time. We need to move on. Um, so I do believe there needs to be a time limit. Uh, if the board chooses to allow them to extend, the board can do that, but there needs to be a a set time limit. So each group presenting. Knows what their time.
Um, so would twenty or thirty work?
I I am totally open. Do you have a preference?
Um, I think if we set it at twenty. Um, and then when somebody comes in and asks. Um, well, but that's the problem. Now it's a rule. You'd have to suspend your rules in order to allow it to.
As I said, I'm fine with thirty. I just left it at fifteen to show you that. That that's an item for discussion on the rule. Um, technically, anybody that had a presentation longer than thirty minutes, you repeated yourself. Many, many times to get longer than thirty minutes. I can't think of anybody or any group or any agency that would need to take a presentation longer than thirty minutes. So I am totally fine with thirty minutes.
So and I also, the board will not entertain more than two presentations at one board meeting. I think that. Sometimes you have things that you need to discuss and, you know, while it's great to be expeditious. And our due diligence to the time, I think that that's that's unnecessary.
So are you okay with changing fifteen to thirty?
Yep.
It's item number one. And in length period, and you're asking to strike and the board will not entertain more than two presentations.
Correct.
So I will cross that one. I have no problem with that. Lori, do you have a problem with that or want to speak to it?
No.
Okay. Sorry. Mr. Zoller, do you have a? And again, that one I added, the request must not be of a political nature or be politically divisive. This is. County, I'm hoping that in the board rules. Some people that want a presentation, um, we were approached, I believe, and staff can correct me if I'm wrong. By the organization that had the election rally at the fairgrounds. To do a presentation. Um, and I made an executive decision and you can remove me from chair if you disagree. Uh, to tell her to not uh, schedule such presentation because it is politically in nature. Hence the reason. That we need to adopt more. So like, uh, you get on the public comment and you see where it says substitute senate bill, blah, 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 blah. That was. I have not verified that. That was in there from the previous language of the previous people that use that. And the other thing I'll bring to your attention. When we had all the comments for the, what were the comments for last week under canvas? Um, in the minutes. We just listed public comment received from and named all the people.
Okay.
I advised the board to. Also put the subject. Or they know they said various public comments for on other hands. And I told them that the people that made comments should be named. Written comment. And the topic of their. So that they can see in the minute that we did receive them, we did hear them, we did see them. Um, so I had them change that. Policy. So now written comment will state the person's name and what the written comment was about. If you don't like my executive decision, you can tell staff now and they'll stop doing it.
Thanks for me.
Okay, so the big change here is number three, rule nine, number three, A three. All comments must be limited to items on the agenda. Speakers are asked to identify the specific agenda item they wish to address. That's quite a change. And however the board wants to go, um, I know that, um, in many ways. Um, the public's only opportunity to talk about things that are off the agenda to all three of us is public comment.
Well, if you think about it, you would eliminate our Miss Sunshine. Kathy Moko.
Right.
So we do have good and bad. There's positive and there's negative.
So I've seen it two ways. I've seen it, number one, they have public comment at the beginning of the meeting. For items on the agenda that are not a public hearing. And then at the end of the 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 meeting, then they have public comment for anything that's not on the agenda. Um, so that at the beginning of the meeting, I've seen it done that way. I've seen it just open up at the beginning of the meeting. So. I bet I think that, you know, other than that, it is really difficult for the public. To have access to all three of us at one time. But again, though, remember, public comment is not public back and forth. You know, there's not, there's not a lot of opportunity for back and forth communication with an entire board. Cause we're not allowed to talk outside of these meetings, which makes it more difficult.
Well. Sorry.
I was just, um.
The main reason for these. One of the main reasons for these rules is the nine hundred uh, email updates that you've all received from M R S C and whatnot. Anticipating our future.
The next year, yeah.
If. If you are not going to limit comment to items on the agenda, I would recommend before this board. That they not approve any of these rules. Because if you allow it to be open discussion. You're going to hear. I certainly hope whoever's elected chairman is a parliamentarian. Because you're gonna hear point of orders about twenty seven times during public. Every single time a citizen addresses an individual commissioner. That is a point of order and is a violation of Robert's rules of order. Every time. They are out of Robert's rules of order, the chairman will have to be a parliamentarian. And decide if they're out of order. And then they'll have to rule on that out. Which is appealable by the rest of the board. So it's going to make a public spectacle. I also don't want to put the. I also don't wanna put the. Bad guy persona on whoever is the chairman. Where it's up to the chairman to get their house in order and keep their. Office in order and their meeting in order and keep it from being. Um, belligerent like it has been in the past. And it's going to get far worse next year. Uh, if you're gonna let him comment on anything and everything. Which is kinda what we do now, I try to keep them on the scope of germane to county business, but we can see from. Every comment, not every comment, but darn near every week, there's at least some comments that are not germane to county business. You're gonna open up. The exact thing that MRSC and every government is afraid of. Because you're going to be getting. Public comments on Palestine and Israel, what are you gonna tell them? No. Well, now you might be violating if you let this guy speak and that guy not speak, you're gonna open us up to potential litigation. By trying to say you can and you can't. Um, it's going to be quite the festival. Um, now that we have Zoom in a political year. Um, and the state requirement that you must take public comment. Uh, which I will also add that most counties don't take oral public comment, they only take written public comment. The vast majority that take oral comment are only oral comment on the agenda. I know city councils still are fifty fifty on whether they take public comment off the agenda. And I'm all fine and dandy for that, and I think it's a good avenue as long as you have. Uh, stability. And, uh, we, we, we don't have that anymore. So I, I find it very risky. To not limit items to the agenda, but that's again where that. Community forums thing came in that I highlighted earlier, where some counties allow, once a month, you can talk about items. Of any other nature, their rule there is it must be germane to county business. So at least that allows them to talk about dog ordinances. Uh, just not the Israeli war. Um, it, it would allow them to talk about constitutional counts, uh, election fraud. Um, that's germane to county business, so you will open the door to all of that at every public comment. Over the length of the public commenters. But at least if you do it that way, you're only doing it one meeting a month and not every single. Just open for discussion.
Are you thoughts, Commissioner Zoller?
I think public comment has gotten better since January. We're. Moving forward with being. Direct but polite. I, I just hate to restrict it for those who want to come in and announce that there's something happening this weekend that they want everybody to hear on Zoom. Um, they use it for so many different reasons rather than just business with the county. And we have a few that use it for the continual reasons that. Um, conversations have gotten better. It, it was a fairly good day today, it, it, you know, you're gonna get some things that are. Uh, you don't agree with or you're controversial with, but we limit that time and they have their, their time. Um, but I'd hate to restrict it for the larger majority because of just of a few bad. Instances we've had.
I, I agree with you.
And I have not lived through the past.
Right, I agree with you, but I guess I look at it now that we, we get four public comments. And three of them are incorrect, inaccurate, spreading falsehoods, standing on soapboxes. Um, spouting whatever they wanna spout regardless of whether it's factual or not factual. We do get the occasional good one. And I, I don't wanna not have the good one, but it doesn't mean that that, uh. Brain fart there, uh, that Anne couldn't have sent us all an email as well.
Right.
So the, it's not that you're closing off access to the board. Uh, because you could still, I mean, you could type the email and send it to all three as well, if you're not gonna have. Discussion back, which I believe is still the, the plan. But you will be limiting because it's not just going to be three next year.
Well.
You're gonna have the players, the political players on both sides. Public commenting every meeting about whatever their, uh, election fraud, constitutional county.
And we did, we did have this conversation. In one of the conferences I sat through in Spokane and, um, some of the remedies other counties had had. Um, they don't, they just let them do their three minutes, they don't answer.
None of them answered, we're the only ones that answered.
Um, another county has moved to written comments only for public testimony. Uh, if we did something like that, we certainly could allow, um. Say a public brief where if somebody wants to announce, it's gonna be a great thing to go to the. Derby coming up on July fourth, they could, they could.
That could be a public event announcement.
Correct, they could submit it to staff to go on the agenda that we could read. Um.
I actually like that public event announcement, cause that should be able to alleviate the. Still allow our sunshine in the room to be the sunshine.
But then you have to get into the, is it divisive to the county, is it a public event that's divisive based on your other rules, gotta worry about that too.
There is that. Because if they're having a public event that is, um, we'll say whether it's a. And, and, and first off, let me go on record and say that I don't believe this is a. Uh, political. Issue. But some people in this county believe it is a political issue and that is a, uh, a gay pride event. Um, somebody's gonna call that political, the same as. The opposite side is gonna call election reform political. So we're gonna have to take into being judge on what is, what is political. Uh, if we do that, good point.
Um, we still got a ways to go, um, I would entertain, um. I would, I would make a motion to recess for lunch and we can take this up this afternoon.
And I'll second.
Well, we only got a couple pages left too, but we're at the, we're at the action items, so. Uh, we have a motion to second to recess for lunch and be back at one o'clock. Thank you for keeping tabs on the clock, cause I wasn't, uh, any other discussion? Any none, all those in favor of recessing for lunch back at one o'clock, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, most best.
You haven't signed it.
Put it over, I hear recording in process now, so progress will be here. Uh, so we will, uh, reopen our Mrs. P and put Jack County Board of Commissioners. Good question, I heard you were scheduled, but I don't see you on our agenda.
I'm Agmit's HR, I'm Kendy. I just said to come about. With, uh.
Oh. That works. Alright, we still have a couple items to discuss, um. Before we go there, do we want Sharon to happen to sit here for an hour or however long it takes? For us to get through the W H thing and potentially back to the board policy thing, or do you wanna just tell her to? We'll call her when we're ready or come back at two or.
Uh, we need Rob here, right?
Yep.
So I don't see him, so.
I mean, I don't necessarily wanna go into executive and cancel the recording and then have to start the recording.
Right, yeah, no.
Right, he said to come about once.
Yeah, so I'm just thinking as if we can get you a better time. So you don't have to sit here for an hour.
So we can always, we can always go into executive, um, and then. Um, pause the recording, turn everything off.
Okay, that would, can you pause the recording and?
Yours is in executive?
It's not, meaning you would have to have two meet, you would have to have two recordings? You don't have any executive.
I do.
He does.
Ah, so technically I can put you in right now.
Yes.
Okay. Well, then I would, uh, I would ask my seatmates if they have any opposition of adding. This into unfinished business.
Or new business, do we know?
Like, it's not me, cause we already heard.
Related to the employee wage stuff for the drivers.
Got it.
And I have one, uh, that's, uh, that letter of support for the. Had your resource issue that's in business.
Or we can just say that's considered board pending and then we can deal with the executive afterwards, so let's take board pending out of order and we'll go ahead.
Okay, I'll kind of want us.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Let me, let me get my gavel ready in case you get all lumpy on.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, so you, um, um, ask. Sharon and I to meet and discuss, uh, her request for consideration. Or, um, wage adjustments on the van drivers. Transportation coordinator.
Yeah.
And then, uh, an organization, an org chart change from with a clerical into a clerical two. So we did meet, I got more information from, from Sharon's team on the wages. I was also instructed to approach it the same way we approached the salary survey, um, previously. Uh, and, and we did that, and, um, so that the. The short answer is that, that we would, I would recommend. That the van drivers get a, a grade increase from a thirty three to a thirty four, wouldn't affect their steps. And that the transportation coordinator go from thirty four to a thirty five. Which is consistent with what we did in the past, we gave a grade bump regardless of how far they were out of the medium or the midpoint. Um, we went over the changes that she's proposing to make a clerical on a clerical two, that's very straightforward, so. Um, we, we asked her at some point for verbal approval to bring back a formal change to the org chart to, to allow her to make that change. Um, and, and I believe Sharon wants to talk to you, so I'm, you know, uh, I told her she can. She can give you her own, her own side of the story, this is, but this is. Doing what you asked me to do, and I'd go, I'd remind the Commissioners that the. The pays system, our comp plan, doesn't recognize or acknowledge the difference between how they get paid, whether it be grant funded. General funded landfill funds, you know, it's, it's across the organization, so, um.
Clarification question?
Yes, sir.
So you're saying the one pay grade bump for the van drivers and the one pay grade bump for the clerical admin going from a one to a two. But the, that adjustment is consistent with the. Procedure that we used with everybody else.
Right, yeah, and, and it was a transportation coordinator would also get their one grade apart, so they probably would. If we'd only raised the van, we probably would have wanted to raise.
Upstairs, I believe.
Like we did in another department, but in this case, the data justifies at least a grade for each one of those.
I just wanted clarification on that.
And my concern was that, that transportation coordinator is still. Under compared to all of the other comparable counties as well as. Looking just even within our region, which it actually looked worse comparing the comparable counties. Than if we were just looking at our immediate.
That's where I think, is that I mentioned before, and sorry if I'm. Dominating the discussion, feel free to jump in. Um, I think where I said that, I think because you want to add job duties. I think that needs to go before a job classification board and then they can look at it and go, okay, no, it needs another one. And then they can, if they so determined, they'll give it another bump.
Yeah, so I guess, yeah, so I guess the transportation coordinator isn't, where I'm confused about is. It, it isn't really, I mean, we're comparing when we're looking at the dispatcher position, that's, that's in. The other comparables, it isn't actually adding duties, it is what it is, it is a comparable position. And we've been grossly underpaid.
Where I look at that position, there's two things, one, we've been underpaying, and number two, you wanna assign these things too, but so it could be.
No, that was the clerical person that I was assigning, and that's me raising that, so I'm not.
And I may miss, I may misspoke to you, so yeah, the, the duty changes was for the clerical, and we reviewed those. And, and, and that makes perfect sense.
I'm not changing the duties for the van drivers or the dispatch, uh, transportation coordinators.
So it would.
And I'm saying that when you look at.
Duties are the same, but you're saying even with the one pay grade bump, it doesn't need comparables, what, what are the comparables?
So, eleven counties that we use, they use the same comparable counties that we did.
What percentage were they at if we give them a one pay grade bump?
Well, if you take it down to the ninety percent, which was a cutoff that we used there, their eleven percent under the midpoint of the comparable, so a grade.
They're, they're eleven percent under now, so a grade will give them six percent.
Right.
Meaning they're still five percent below.
But that was also the case with the, the at least dozen or dozen and a half folk positions that we raised last time is. There was no acknowledgement in that process, I understand this is different, there was no acknowledgement in that process, how far below the ninety percent they were. If they were one percent below or farther, they got one grade, nobody got more than one grade bump regardless of where they, so.
And I guess, and then I'm looking at the perspective too of retention of staff, because it's way more expensive to try. And go, you know, because you, you will have people leave when they can get hired at higher rates at other areas, um.
And I don't, and I don't want you to think we're here in opposition to each.
I need information from one of our.
And I don't think we're here in opposition to each other, is, I told Sharon, I recognize she's advocating for one of her positions.
And I'm, you know, and, and, and that's where I'm looking at, I, I think in the long run, if I get where it's like, okay, we wanna do one grade. Well, two really brings us more in line with the others, but if we only go one. I see that potentially we're gonna end up in a worse situation where I'll have openings and then there's the coverage issue over time. Potentially even for covering positions when we're down. And then the ability to recruit where we'll then be reclassifying again versus maintaining good people. And retaining some of those, obviously on the driver's side, I talked about that, we're talking retirements.
But what I was gonna add is, my pers, my job is to present the big picture of the whole county. And so, um, it would not be equitable to what we've done in the past, and frankly, probably a number of positions. Or more would fall into the same, the same situation she's describing, so.
So. Assistant planner, and refresh my memory, assistant planner, civil engineer, IT help desk one, two, plans examiner one, two. And IT systems administrator. Their comparables were all between seventy five and eighty four percent. They only ever got one pay grade bump.
Yeah, we just didn't take that into consideration, if they were below, they got it, if they were above, they didn't. One grade, I mean, it's, we, we just didn't, uh, should we have, could we have, we just didn't, it was, if they were below, they got six percent. If they were way below or a little below, they all got one grade.
I believe there was board discussion on that issue, uh, previous board. Um, and. The board was not unified in their answer. But the board did answer the way I believe you, you mentioned. So if we did give one pay grade bump. Figuring that six percent, assistant planner would be at eighty one percent now, civil engineer would be at eighty one. Help desk, IT help desk one and two would be at eighty one. Plans examiner one and two would be at eighty three. Uh, elections administrator would be at eighty five. IT systems administrator would be at ninety now, and then the rest of them, permit tech, IT manager, associate planner. Uh, would all be above the ninety percent, but we would still have people below the ninety.
Well, and remember, um, which is not Sharon's issue, but. Well, and remember, um, which is not Sharon's issue, but there were a considerable number of positions. We didn't get enough data for.
And you have.
So we can assume there's more.
There's more, right.
There's more, but the data we had.
But that's why I said at that time, this didn't cover everybody because we didn't have enough information. So if a director sees that their employees weren't covered under here and they have an issue, bring it up, we'll do a survey. And go from there, which I think is what we're doing. I'm sorry to dominate the discussion. How about her?
What's the budget impact?
Oh, in terms of the overall dollar amount, I have not run numbers because I don't know what, if it's just going to be a one or a two or.
So that would be good to know. Um, this year you're still burning through cash balance, correct? And so we can assume that if we make this um change, will we need to burning through more cash balance because your, your grants are not going to cover the difference, correct?
Correct. Likely the grants won't in terms of, I mean, we have a number of cost reimbursements with limits.
Hmm.
So there would potentially have to be adjustments in terms of what kind of service or that could be to stay within those parameters.
Or how many van drivers.
With the funds that have been awarded over the grant cycles because those are, you know, awarded for a couple of years.
Right, but technically.
And then the contracts vary. There's amendments and.
It doesn't mean you would have to come back to us and ask for more county cash. You could potentially go from twenty van drivers down to nineteen and then the one you're missing pays for everybody else's adjustments.
That would be a service level.
That's a service level adjustment to pay for the. It doesn't need to be a county ass for dollars is my point.
Which is where we fall if like when fuel goes up and repairs and all that.
Comment.
Yeah.
Sorry for budget bracket.
Okay.
So we, it, we have um staff asking for two levels. We have um HR.
For the transportation coordinator position.
Or we have HR recommending one. Um, how do my seatmates feel about that?
I'll speak. I just don't want to be.
And it's still under. It's still under everywhere else in the area.
Mm-hmm.
If you do too.
Yep.
We don't use local comparators in any situation.
No, it's still under the comparable counties too. Okay. Okay.
What percentage was it at? You said eleven under, so it's at eighty-nine or seventy-nine, sorry?
Roughly, yep.
I guess, are you ready for me to speak again?
Oh, anytime.
Trying to, trying to be, behave myself. Uh, I guess my first order of business would be I'm fine with the recommendation of the one pay grade bump, which is comparable to what we did with everybody else. Uh, it is fair and equitable across sport. Um, I'm one of those fair and equitable kind of guys. Now, we can have the argument on whether I personally think that's enough for not only yours, but the other ones that didn't get bumped high enough. Um, but we also have to look and understand. That if your, yours is eleven percent under, we have some that are, or essentially seventy-nine percent of average. We have some that are seventy-five, 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 seventy-seven and another one that's seventy-nine. So we have to understand the consequences that if we, if we so choose to give it a two K pay grade bump. I would, in the same matter of fairness, um, need to entertain. Reexamination of all the people that fall into those other five job titles. To be fair and equitable across board. So even though yours might be able to be picked up by grant funds. There's, is probably not. So even though yours won't cost us money to be fair and equitable, the others would. So that's. My dilemma. Um, I have no problem with the one going to two. I need to. I would need to think more.
May I comment? To look at the fair and equitable, again, not Sharon's issue, I don't fault her for asking.
No.
Is, we then should also look at the folks there wasn't enough data for, which was the majority of the positions. And the best answer, but the most expensive answer is another salary survey, which is done by an outside vendor. So now we're talking twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars. Plus the impact, which there always will be an impact when, because we do note any given time with two hundred and fifty. Employees that any certain amount of positions are under the market. And so the financial impact could be significant potentially at a time when we're looking at restricted funds, but.
Right.
So to be equitable across the organization, it would be even bigger than that.
I, I understand and it, but I'm a firm believer of you have to pay your employees what they're worth. And if that means you need less employees to be able to share those fundings, then that's what you do. Um. So I understand where you're coming from on that. When are we do, we'll have to go through union negotiations again and then I'm assuming the year after that, we will probably readdress salary comparables potentially. And when is that?
That would be a discussion further. We talked about it this year. We thought about it this year and didn't seem like the right year. So either we do it the year before, union, which would be next year. Or we do it the year after. So whether you lead with the non-union or you, or you lead with the.
But there's also no guarantee because we hired the outside person to do this salary survey and it came back with a bunch of, we don't know the answer to a lot of the questions.
We probably use a different firm just to.
Yeah, and the concerns, you know, I, I've been here sixteen years and the salary surveys that have been done, which, you know, I did benefit from one early on that reclassified. Another positions, but they tend to have a really hard time with departments that aren't just like typical general fund type services, even though. There are very much comparable services to things in my department in a number of counties and areas as well, but they never seem to be able to do those comparisons. Um, so we kind of get left out or put in these weird, no, because I mean. Yeah, there's a number of positions in my department that are in some kind of odd thing that the duties that are with, you know, as complicated as my budget is. And managing in all the grants and contracts that we manage that, that aren't captured.
Well, I feel like what we call a plans examiner, somebody else calls a plans examiner, but completely different duties. So I don't.
I feel like.
I trust the information received, but I don't trust the information received. From the package that we spent.
Cause that's what the consultant does is they actually compare job descriptions. They don't take titles. They, they, I, I did these for a living before I came here. They uh, they never look at the job titles. They look at the job descriptions and compare. And then they sometimes follow up with interviews to make sure that it's apples to apples. That's why they're expensive and that's why they take such a long time. And then in many cases, and, and this happened to, in terms of her stuff, they, sometimes they just can't get the information out of counties, you know, they just won't respond.
Question for you is, are you sure? We made the cutoff at ninety percent?
Well, it was eighty-five, the original, and then we bumped it up to ninety.
In, in my notes here, it has a cutoff at eighty-eight percent.
That's right. And then I came back on your recommendation and we bumped it to ninety and that includes the IT manager and one or two other positions that, that, because remember they had.
Go to ninety.
Cause they had it fifteen below, they had it eighty-five and ten above. So if you were ten percent above the median or fifteen below. And uh, the discussion wasn't, it was appropriate was why isn't it ten and ten?
That's right.
Or fifteen and fifteen. And so uh, and I'd asked the, the consultant that tuned in, get a satisfactory answer. So the commissioner said, let's do ten and ten to be fair.
Side note, this was done before you were here. Do you have any interest in a copy of this fine thing to throw in your file and? If you can find it again, you're looking for it.
I think Rob gave it to me.
So it was appropriate to raise to ninety. It was consistent with above and below. So it impacted a couple of other positions.
Sorry, me banging on the desk is echoing through the mic. That's my, I don't have my digit device. Well, I guess we need to take this and let's take it in two parts. Part number one is whether we agree with the recommendation to lift them one. Pay grade. Consistent with. What we did before. And then item number two, I would say for consideration or my recommendation for consideration is whether we. Uh, follow that uh, or go with providing a second bump uh to the transportation coordinator. Is that right?
And if you do the second one, what I would ask you is allow me the time to look and see. Another thing we always did was.
I would have you investigate that one.
How's the impact across, you know?
Yeah.
Who else is at that higher grade? What are the types?
Cause we have not investigated the consequences of that action. I would, I would urge the board. We make a decision on the one. If we make a decision on the other one, that is an advisory decision to do more research. And not a yes or no kind of scenario. Well, not a yes, but uh, on the second.
And then, and then if I may, on the first one, there's no controversy, at least with us about uh, taking the, adding a clerical two box to the org chart, which is fairly common across the organization and it does qualify me.
Would it, would it change the org box from one, two, or would it add a two and remove the one?
Be one slash two. So.
So you still only got one org box is.
Yeah.
Perfect. That's, yep. Don't want to unfill a position. Side joke. For your department. Uh, again, it's my recommendation that we abide by what we. Um, did for everybody else on item number one. Uh, keep it fair and equitable, but also give Sharon the guidance to make the numbers work. Um, without coming back and asking for the money to cover it next year or the year after or the year after, whatever that time is. So if that needs to be through. Um. Attrition, which would be my recommendation. Um, that if this is for whatever van drivers and you gotta come up with more money for van drivers, that the next time a van driver leaves, you keep one open position and. Use their pay to cover everybody else's gap. Rather, I don't want to lay anybody off. Uh, so it would be my recommendation to approve that with, with said guidance, but up to the worst.
Well, I, I agree. I think we have to keep it fair and equitable. Um. And. On the two.
I would just stick with item one until we get it done and then we'll move to item two.
Till we get more information.
I'm, I'm fine with the, the one grade, keeping it fair. Um, I would ask the staff uh, come forward with the plan of. Um, what we're gonna do with regards, regarding service levels with regarding the plan, knowing that we're burning through the cash balance and what the plan is once we. Don't have that cash balance to burn through any longer and what service levels and, and changes are expected to be made. Um, we need to know that before we get to that cliff.
I would, I would second that. I would like to see. I guess I'd say a budget forecast for next year to see what you're gonna have to do to try to stay within your current. Budget without burning fun balance and maybe. Maybe that one and attrition covers both. I don't know, but I would be curious before we get in the next budget season to kind of know what your plan moving forward is. I would, I'd like that in all departments.
And if, and if I may, Adam, it's probably relevant that, that we do that. Plus, you've already approved a four percent increase January first. Not all of our comparators give four percent. And so that may offset some of that percentage already. Um.
As I said, it takes a year or two, but then the numbers you already got are already skewed because they gave two percent or three percent and a total of five and we gave eight and so the numbers.
All of the costs are already going up four percent January one anyway. So uh.
But we did, we did bake that into the budget though.
Yeah.
We did not bake this into the budget.
Right. Well, it's baked into a non-departmental. I mean, the money's setting over there. Yeah.
I'm gonna remind everybody to mute their phone for whoever that was. That's phone just beeped. Sorry, that was me.
What am I? Was it yours?
No, mine's silent.
Um, so is that consensus of a yes on item number one? I believe it was. Yes, yes, yes.
Which is to do the drivers another grade.
I think that was everybody gets a grade.
And the transportation coordinators starting January.
Not everybody just.
Well, well, it's three, correct? Pardon me? Well, it's, are, we're, cause we're giving the grade with the clerical admin, one to clerical admin, two.
No, that's not a grade.
That's not a grade, that's a.
Those, those are already set in the pay grades, just adding the second, which is a higher pay.
So technically we're only giving the pay grade bump to the drivers and the uh, transportation dispatcher.
Right. The clerical will go up just by virtue of.
Just by virtue of being up, correct. Okay.
It, and as far as the effective date, January one, I don't know what Sharon was thinking or.
What was your plan for that? We haven't heard that or discussed that.
As soon as possible would be.
Probably January one, by the time we draft a resolution.
By the time we draft everything, get it through, get it to payroll, get them making the adjustments in the system, I would think January one.
Okay.
And plus somebody tells me otherwise, which you're open to do.
So we'll draft the resolution and the org chart and work with Sharon, bring that back and it's gonna send agenda item like we typically do.
Okay. Item number two. Uh, which is giving a, a second pay grade bump to the transportation dispatch specialist, I believe is what she called it.
Dispatch, yep.
Right. Transportation coordinator.
Coordinator.
Title, official title.
And the argument is the job classification currently is correct. But they are. Under the ninety percent threshold that even with the pay jump, they're still only gonna be at, by my math, eighty-four percent. Eighty-four percent, no, eighty, eighty-six percentile, cause that'd be four less, right? Eleven, six, that's five. So now, sorry, that'd be eighty-five percentile.
And which could be nor, more in the new year, because we did not, even though the other comparables that we spoke to. We were going based on their current rate. They did say they were doing increases in the new year. Uh, COLAs anywhere from four to eight percent was what was noted.
Yeah, but in the same regard, I would also add that.
And then.
We did the salary study on them, one COLA year after we did it on everybody else. So the number's already gonna be skewed from what everybody else got, just because everybody else had a COLA in the, in between the surveys. Except now, that's the one I'm torn.
Yeah.
That, I guess I'm gonna come back to it. That I believe all of our employees deserve fair and equitable play, pay according to the median of the comp uh, comparable counties. The question comes down to is can we afford it? The consequences are, can you afford not to? Um, and I'm still a firm believer that in the. Job environment we currently have. It's a employees market. It's not an employer's market. Um, but that's also far more for the skilled professions than I would say the blue collar professions. It would still be my same opinion. That. Whether it's today, tomorrow or next year. This county gets its service levels on par with what it can afford. So that our employees can be paid a comparable wage. And I will kind of hold off then and let somebody give me your opinion.
Well, I think Jake, did you ask for Sharon to come back and give us more information about what those service levels would look like, what this would do?
I wouldn't say that's exactly the same. Mine was, mine was asking for, for what our plan is in the future.
Mm-hmm.
What we're talking about here is, is whether it's a, it's a two, a bump, bump up of two. Um.
I anticipate we'll be busy.
Yeah, well, and I would anticipate all of these others that I mentioned here that didn't get to. To be back before us with two and we have not budgeted for those next year.
Remember, some of those bumped to other people just to keep the plan. So they would also need to be bumped. So.
Hence the reason I said there's punt or there's. Uh, ramifications to doing such. But in the long term, I think, I believe that would be the correct policy choice. It just needs to be budgeted for and service levels adjusted to compensate. But I don't know that budgeted for and service levels. But I don't know that budgeted for and service levels. Compter, to compensate for it are a quick.
And, and I think. That is what's gonna be addressed in. Some fashion or level when we go through the. Early intense fiscal review next year is, is what does the future look like? What can we afford and how does that impact service levels and in the structure? I, I suspect there'll be structural changes potentially. As we have all of these in-depth discussions starting in thirty days. Some of that's gonna come up during depth and the budget process for twenty twenty-five, when we anticipate the. Bigger impact than we had in twenty twenty-four, so.
I would agree and, and I would say during this year's budget. Adoption process, there were some unprecedented. Decisions that. I would hope. Would shift the county's current way of thinking. Uh, may, may not.
I'm not sure if I fully understood that, but. Okay. So I think the, the second question might be bridged too far at this time. Um, I would really like to see where the. What you can come up with for, I'm not really, you know, I, I don't think in terms of twenty twenty-four. I look in terms of twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. That's what I'm looking for with these fiscal cliffs. And what we will be able to provide. And I know you do an amazing job of getting grants and planning for these things in the future, and we're gonna have to do a lot of that planning ahead of time.
Yeah, but I also, I do wanna be, you know, upfront about there's a lot of things out of my control at different times too, when we've had. You know, cuts and that, and, and then. We've had to respond in that way. Been in the position of laying off people and cutting. Which is not fun or enjoyable, and so it, it does always stress me out about asking. For more and that too, because then I'm like, I don't wanna be turning around and then. Laying people off and that either, but I'm in this situation where I've gotta, I mean. Be able to meet the need and the demand and try to address that, and I'm. Very concerned about just even replacing, you know, positions in these upcoming years.
How many current job openings do you have?
So currently we are actively seeking just the, um, part-time cook in white salmon. And then we are in need of, um, casual drivers. We don't have any. Full-time driver openings available right now, but we have retirements coming up this coming year. Uh, and the next year, so in the next couple of years, that's where we are, and that's where I'm wanting to make sure I don't end up.
How many, how many casuals do you keep on at a time?
So, well, the casuals, that number can vary. Um, because some of our casuals work very limited. They're only available very limited time, whereas others will work. As much as we kind of need them to do. And so, um, right now, we're hurting more on the, the white salmon end. We're pretty good with Goldendale. So, cause those are the positions though that cover also like when our full-time. And part-time drivers have vacation sick, um, and then holidays, cause we have, we still have to operate. A lot of times on the holidays, taking people to dialysis, um, other essential medical things, so it's not.
Right, I just wanna encourage, since you mentioned the word layoff a few times. Uh, I wanna publicly put it out there, intentions is not to have a layoff. Um. But if we need to adjust budget that we do it through attrition. That when somebody retires or quits or whatever else, we just don't fill that position. Um. That is far more palatable.
Yeah, and I just referenced it in terms of my department, because we have federal and state, where, you know, there was sequestration and there was cuts in that. And so that's kinda relating to the fund balance piece and going through that is that we aren't, I am not a department that ends up with. A buildup of, it's very unusual that we've had the fund balance we've had, and that was extra COVID. Funds that came in where we weren't having to use the county match that typically we would have, and. Now we'll be reverting back to more normal because we're out of that COVID fund time, so. And then unfortunately, hopefully, we don't end up in a situation where there's sequestration and further cuts with some of our main programs. Cause it, it, it tends to be cyclical and, uh.
You bring that up and now comes a good time, cause you weren't here when it was on our agenda, and I really wanted to ask you, but I think you were sick and I really didn't wanna bug you with it. Um, the max we had this year, three hundred thousand for the vans. Going forward. Um. I would like to, and again, it's just one vote. Um, I would like to make sure that our equipment is actually needed to be replaced. I'm not saying it wasn't. Um, that if we can extend things a year or two more out of them. That's a year or two, we don't have to find three hundred thousand dollars, kind of the scenario.
Yeah, and I don't. And typically, the issue has been that we've, we go beyond the useful life of our vehicles, cause then we also even reserve, use. Ones in reserve status as backup. Ones that have, you know, and comparatively to other transportation entities, we use ours much longer. Than what is typical. Um, but once you get to a point too, where you're spending more on repairs than you would. On sometimes actually being better off having a replacement vehicle, so. So we don't cycle, we're not every year. I mean, it's, it's been, and it's always been. A grant that's taken up the bulk of that.
On vehicle replacements, and I, I'm just warning you that I would have asked much more questions about that. Uh, if you were actually here to answer the questions. Um, but no blaming you for not being here, cause you were sick and you told me to call you if I need to do, and I'm like, nope, I'm good. Cause I didn't wanna bug you while you're sick, so it's on me, not on you. Um. Do you have an opinion on the? Item number two, second pay bump. Jake's giving his, sorry.
Um, I am concerned with being. With the equity.
Meaning, meaning other positions.
That's my, my main concern.
You said that is my concern too, because to be equitable, all those other five need to have the ability to come back and ask for a second bump as well. And then my concern is we obviously do not have that planned in our budget. Um, nor do we have the policy put in place in this county to. Um. Reduce services through attrition to make sure we can meet our budget goals. So. I guess for me, I find it. In the middle of a pickle. Where what I want to do. I don't currently have the support to do it. Which. Hurts because it almost gets me voting in a way that goes against my morals and ethics. And that's my conundrum. Oh, he's, he's, he's off the hook now. He's given his, we have to give ours.
You know, a lot of, a lot of what I hear the commissioners talking about, not necessarily. Focused on this position or that. Is the intensive review that we're, we all know and understand, we're gonna go through next year. That will include service levels, it just has to. Um, you know, either get more money or you have less expense. I mean, it's pretty simple math. And there's a lot of unknowns, so, and I know there's no preconceived idea, at least I've not heard a preconceived. Idea of how that should be when we come through the other side of that discussion. But I think it was Yogi Bear said the future ain't what it used to be.
I guess that's kind of where I'm coming from is it, at this point. Where we are currently today. Even though it goes against. What I believe that our employees should get. Comparable pay. We are not set up to be able to deliver that. And while I would like to be a yes vote, just to. Can go with my moral foundation that they deserve that comparable pay. I believe I need to be a no. And allow this board. One last opportunity. To. It. To have my vote. If it is going to go forward in the next year with what I believe it intends to do. Which is get this county on a fiduciary track. Where it is sustainable. And looks at in advance, not waiting until November to decide if something needs the budget or not. That we make those service adjustments necessary to get our employees to comparables. And that is included in next year's budget discussions. Uh, so I'm gonna say no. With the hope that my, this board. Goes in the next budget cycle. Thinking about this. And all the other ones. And encourage you to come back. Which may be too late, I understand, but encourage you to come back. Next year. When we do the budget. Because if we don't get ourselves on a fiduciary track, I'm gonna stick with my ethics and say yes to the next. I know that was messy, but, um.
So we'll, we'll move forward with the.
I don't know if you've got an official opinion over there yet.
She's nodding on the first.
Yes. Okay, so one grade for transportation coordinator and driver, January first. And.
And I apologize in advance, and I hope the position you have. Understands the. Uh, difficulty we have in, in making the decision. And bears with us why we hopefully work to remedy the situation.
And then I'll plan to do a department update to talk about the actual dollar changes and how we're gonna work with.
That would be great, because I'm, we're hoping that. We address next year's budget as we go through the year and create a little more planning before changes need to be made. Um, so that nothing is of a surprise.
Okay.
Anything else? Any objections to anything I said?
Can I add one more thing before you go into executive session?
So I'm gonna go to executive, we're gonna go back to unfinished business. Uh, go ahead.
So I have a, we received, uh, this is natural resource issue. We've received a request. From the Yakima Nation. Fisheries for a letter of support. They're applying to Noah. Uh, restoring tribal priority fist pass used to bury a removal. There's three hundred size culverts on Brush Creek with the bridge and. Um, and they would like a letter of support from the county for that grant to do that work, and they've given us a. Example, if you're so inclined, and I told him I'd get back to him. Um, but I needed to bring it to you for. Feedback.
Where is Brush Creek, do you know?
I believe it's on the reservation in Yakima County.
The tributary to White Creek on the Clickiterra.
So it's in Click, it's in Yakima County, but because we are the lead entity, they're asking us for a letter of support.
I. Guess I'll speak first again. I usually try to speak last as chair, but today I'm breaking the rules. Um. I have no problem with it. I, I hope that it may. Show people. That we can work together and further the betterment for both of us. So, yeah, no, I would be happy to support.
Normal request.
So I'll draft it based on, um, the other one they got and bring it back to you for, um, next week on consent to kit, if I can get it done by Wednesday. Um, for your approval. It should come from the commissioners, not from.
Right.
For me.
Happy.
That are. Thank you, and I'll wait till you're ready to go to the executive session.
Yep. Thank you. That was like forty-five minutes. That was almost surprising. We might not have time to get to all of our stuff. Um, let's move in order and go for WSU, these are the one to discuss. I printed out the. Information that I sent over to them. After they sent their letter. Which I do need to clarify with them. There is an agenda. In this. That agenda was also not submitted. With the vacation request, which is in violation of county policy. Um, I had to go find that online. Um. But I did submit that, so they know what it was about. Uh, and then the VRBO stuff. Um, and I was mistaken earlier when I said that it was, uh, three days of lodging. Uh, I was wrong, it was four. Uh, for a one-day conference. Um, and then obviously you were all emailed on his response. Today, which I've included on the front page of your packet. Jake didn't wanna pack it, he got it electronic. So with that, I would. Open it to any discussion anybody wants to make. Uh, oh, and he did ask if, uh. I would be amenable to a phone call to discuss this more in detail. And I do believe. I would rather be hands-off. But. For him to be able to ask me questions that he may not get the answer to out of a third party, I think it best if I do. Uh, have a conversation with him and let him.
Right, some, some of those things were questions about past conversations.
Or something, so I'm, I'm fine with that, but I still wanna allow you to handle everything else.
And I, I've been, I've been communicating, um, and it's been moving along. They actually. Uh, provided us with quite a bit of information about how the programs work. I was interested. In the differences of four H and the extension programs and the separation or how they work together. Um.
I would be, if I can, sorry to interrupt, because that's a board rule that I shouldn't do. But I know I'm gonna forget with my short memory if I let you keep going. I would be very curious, I heard four H programs can operate. Outside of WSU.
I've found out.
I would be curious if, if that rumor is.
I've found out from WSU, they sent an org chart and actually, uh, Mr. Gaffney's over Hannah. And runs the extension programs, but Missy is over Harley and runs the four H program. And what Hannah was supplying here for Harley. From WSU, what they said was just local oversight. Uh, but actually, Missy is her program handler.
Well, that would be a curiosity to me if we can put a wedge in there.
Well, not put a wedge in there, but. You know, the four H program has proven itself valuable, it's proven itself popular. I think we, and I have not sent the request back, but I would like to. Could we simply do the contract now and keep Harley moving? Keep the office intact and keep all that in place so that we don't have the controversy over four H going away. And then continue to explore our relationship and our contract with Hannah for extension programs. Because something I learned at the conference we went to, I bumped into other Hannahs who were serving other counties. They supply all kinds of things. It isn't just the program she'd worked on here. Um, they had, uh, court programs for counseling for parents and children. Uh, counseling for divorce-type people, uh, they provide, I'd like to see their menu of what they can supply. We used to have, um. Food safety, and they would do canning classes. They actually offered, uh. College as a T tests before, and they would over oversee coming in and taking those. So I think WSU, and I asked one of the leaders, how did you bring this stuff to that county? And she said, oh, well, they had conversations with WSU and we assessed what was lacking in their county and what they might need. So the other thing I found is that Hannah is actually listed under economic development and communities. And we are heavy on the economic. And we are heavy on the economic development side. And uh, we already have the relationship. I'm on the McHead board. We already have the McHead contact. We already have. Our Casey Peta, we have our own staff that's working in economic development. And Hannah had mentioned that she'd worked on a grant through McHead. Maybe there's other resources that would be more valuable to our county. Uh, that we could explore with Hannah's contract, but I would like to see. Moving forward so that the community, what we went through in that little bit of upset over. Four H leaving that we secure that and make sure four H is moving and moving forward. Um, and talk to WSU about that and then go back in and explore at length that other contract, what we're going to do with it.
Right, and I guess I clarify when I say wedge, I don't mean a wedge, more of a wall. Um, that there's a a separation. Um, because I absolutely see the benefit in the four H programs. I wanna support the four H programs, and if I can support them more than I currently do, I'm willing to. Entertain that scenario. But. In the same regard. When they are. As closely tied as they've been in the past. It, I have a fiduciary responsibility. To take care of the taxpayer dollars first. If there was more of a division, where let's say each. Um, the extension. Had one budget, you might say, and four H has another budget. You might say that only Harley and the four H coordinator have oversight of the Harley budget. I would be far more amenable to fully replacing and funding that budget. My problem is not the dollars in the budget, it's the oversight of the dollars. Um, but I. Also like where you're going in talking to other four H directors. Up there at that conference, because it was a great opportunity to do so. Some of the services they provide sounded brilliant. That, why don't we? So I would love to see if there was some kind of a list. On what we think our county needs to provide.
For extension.
That we can give guidance or recommendations or whatever. To the extension director of these are the things we would like you to focus on for the dollars we give. Currently, I see an absolute bang for the buck for the dollars like we give to four H, but I do not see the bang for the buck. Uh, the only instance I can think of is the the Seabirds Butchering Grant. That came out of the executive director's side in three years.
And like I said, we have Casey Peta, we have Mcquette, or we have uh, McAd, we have Lorena, um. We have our own economic development department, so. Uh, I think we're, we could find other services that we might be more valuable in our.
If if we're allowed to have input on.
Right. And that.
We don't know that we do.
I wanted to talk to you guys about it and then reach back back out to WSU and say, this is kind of what we're thinking.
Oh, I guess I would say I would like to. Like to get this done and behind us. I don't wanna take it as piecemeal. I mean, this is a contract we've had. This is a relationship we've had for a hundred years. Um, based on what I'm. Uh, reading in your email, uh, Commissioner Christopher, it seems like there's a. A lack of of trust um, between. Uh, at least you and their staff and uh, we need to take this bull by the horns and get this done. Um, we need to have a meeting with WSU. Um, I know you've been working on the the contract, but. Um, I would be great to get this done by the new year and to have a a meeting with our workshop with Mr. Gaffney. Um, to figure out how we're gonna get through this. Um, I haven't seen, I know Commissioner Zoller has sent an email over to. Um. Uh, uh, Ms. Brous about the move. I haven't heard where. Did did all of those things that were asked get done? Where are we at there?
Yes.
Is there any communication going on? I don't know where that relationship is.
So and and that happened over the last week. And yes, we were able to transition, Public Works needed to transition that office right away because of construction. They were able to take care of that. Uh, with Harley and she helped moved what little was in that room, maybe one box of things. Uh, so our vet veterans man can get comfortable now.
Okay.
Um, the Pioneer Center, the last I heard from Public Works, uh, what Hannah had left in there was. Sitting piled to the back of the room. They had.
But we don't know if that got picked up.
Uh, I don't know in the last week if it got picked up yet, but I can reach back out to see if she's been able to pick those things up. Um. So if I reach back out to WSU, uh, with some of our thoughts and ideas from today. And just have those conversations, would you like to schedule a workshop with Mr. Gaffney?
I would personally like to get this farther along on a one-on-one. Um, before we have a workshop, because if you have a workshop, you're gonna get other entities to show up. You're gonna get lots of other opinions. Uh, and it could potentially turn into another public spectacle. Uh, which if that's the goal, that would be a great thing to do, is to have a workshop and create a public spectacle. Um, or I would prefer. That we keep the dialogue alive between Commissioner Zoller and WSU and try to get us closer. To. Some kind of.
Decision and then look at the menu things, okay? Yeah.
Uh, because same deal, I I need to see what the contract is. I need to be able to tell the taxpayers, oh, no, I trust that there's a fiduciary responsibility going on.
Right.
Um, when currently I can't say that.
And staff was just able to find, locate and find all of the past contracts. And put them in a list and I have that stack. I haven't been able to go back through each year to see what was. Uh, the work was done for the money paid, but for many, many years, we were right in the two thousand or in the sixteen thousand, eighteen thousand range. And then for some reason between uh, twenty-one and twenty-two, we jumped up to from eighteen thousand to seventy thousand. And I wanna see what that difference was and what was provided or what happened there. Why did we have such a big jump in what we were paying? Um.
I I believe that was when we switched over from it being a county employee. To to a WSU employee and it actually saved us money.
Okay, so it actually.
You gotta look at at the budget as a whole.
Right.
Um, so.
Yeah, so I was gonna go through the contract and find that change, but that answers.
But we do, I would say that we do need movement.
Mm-hmm.
And it's getting kind of crunch time.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that I don't know your availability or. Uh. WSU's availability, but I mean, same idea, if you could set something up with them. To have weekly meetings like on Wednesday after our meeting, so you can get new information, let's go back.
Right.
Um, then it that it should be a regularly scheduled movement. Um.
Well, let me see what information.
Hopefully, we can get a little bit farther before we have the public spectacle.
Let me see where I can get with Mr. Gaffney this week, and we're coming back together on Thursday, so I can bring more information on Thursday for it.
Okay.
Okay.
So you you're meeting Wednesday? Or you're meeting Thursday?
Um, I can email him this afternoon.
Okay.
Yeah.
She's gonna try to contact and get information for our board meeting on Thursday.
And I think, were you having a phone call?
I will uh, send him my contact information.
Okay.
And allow him to call me when he.
Okay.
I will probably tell him what times aren't available for me, but other than that, I will fit him into whatever fits in his schedule.
Okay.
Um, but I will make sure that. I guess I.
We'll keep it moving.
I I speak for the issues I have. Um, and the. The documents provided, which it sounds like he is unaware of. That potentially brings light to. Um, the argument. Uh, so I would, I would be curious where it goes, but I won't get into contract negotiations or that's your baby. Um, yeah. Any other, anything else on WSU?
Uh, I just think that it'd be great to have a conversation on Thursday and find out where we're at. I mean, this gets convoluted very quickly when we're looking at. Um, issues with staff, plus also the contract, plus the the budget. There's a lot of moving pieces here and trying to keep it. Together yet separate is important.
Perfect.
Hey. Uh, it's two o'clock.
Remind me.
Yeah, remind me. Put it on our calendar, bright red. Um. It is only two o'clock. Our meeting is at four, so I would like to be done by three, so staff has time to decompress and go downstairs and fill that out. I don't know, how long do you anticipate the executive, you needing for executive? Fifteen. Um, is the board amenable to trying to look over the rest of the policies and procedures for, say, half an hour and then? Move on to executive?
Or would you like to do executives so you can get through? Oh, cuz you have to check.
As I say, there's only a couple pages left, so we might actually be able to get through it and allow me to rewrite.
We are still on the public comment part.
You could leave the room.
Um.
No, I'm teasing you.
I guess from my perspective. Uh, with regards to all comments must be items on the agenda, I I absolutely hear where you're coming from, Commissioner Christopher. I have. Many of the same concerns and many more concerns about this next year. Um, about how things are going to get. Um, and so, um. Though I do think that it's important, um, and so I would say that if we have um. A an essence community forum, since that's what's written in here. Um, at the end of a meeting every two weeks, where people can give uh, public comments on things not on the agenda, that would be okay with me. Um, but I think people need to have open and access. Um, to their commissioners as a body, um, to make their their concerns known about things that are not on the agenda. That we need to be aware of, that are going to be coming onto the agenda. And so, uh, with that though, I would like to see that they remain uh, germane to uh.
I was just.
The decisions of the body. And so whether we include that every week and it must be germane or every other week.
Like I said, the other one, the only one I found that allowed that. The only, and it was city council. Um, it was once a month. Um, and I can give you the exact draft wording of that. Um. I would also recommend that it's once a month, say on the first Tuesday, and we literally schedule it as the last thing before we head out to work any day. Um, so it stays absolutely separate. From the beginning is comments on the agenda, the end is comments germane to county business. Um. I. I see the benefit of it. But. Um. I would still. Rather not. Because again, what is germane to county business and who gets to rule on that? I believe. Many items. Of a political contentiousness nature. On both sides are germane to county business. They might want us to enact ordinances. To limit what parades can take place in county. Pretending county business. It's divisive. And you won't be able to regulate that. Um, you will hear from. Um, activist groups, you will hear from elections deniers, you will hear from. Wolves, you'll you'll hear everything. Because they're all, even though they're not actions that we've even discussed or potentially thought about doing. If they want you to do them, they're germane to county business. So I don't know how much of the. Forecasted. Contentiousness. You're going to stop. If you allow. Germane to county business.
I I think it's really unfortunate that we're talking about it in the negative terms, and I'm always that one that the glasses have full. Um, I I really don't want to exclude. The goodwill people that come in so many different times, not just Kathy. But other people that have been in and told about good things that were happening in their communities that maybe we hadn't heard about. Or upcoming events so that people heard they were coming and they could go out to Bickleton for uh, the rodeo or different. Things. I think we still have an obligation to provide a venue for the positive. And I think we're reacting for negative.
We're absolutely reacting.
Mm-hmm. And and it's.
We're forecasting.
And I'm saying it's, yeah, and it's speculated negative, unfortunately, go ahead.
So would it be? Amenable to the board? To um, reinsert the language for community forum. And explain community forum, I would like it on a specific said week, so everybody can just kind of get used to that week. Cause every two weeks, twice a year, there's five weeks in a month. And it changes. The the thing that I would either rather. I would rather ideally be the first and third week of the month, but ideally I would rather. Just do it once.
And if we did it, oh, go ahead, do it.
I guess I I'm looking at this from a little different perspective. Um, contentious issues, I don't mind. Divisive issues, I don't mind. Um, we're giving, sir, you're interrupting. According to the new rules.
You'll hear.
Gotta mind your own, no, gotta mind your own rules.
So I guess from my perspective, though, um. Public comment has been used for a long time as a way for people to blow off their steam on. On how they feel about um, actions that either the county is taking or is not taking. In which we are or not listening to the wants and needs of the community. And uh, while yes, they can be divisive, and while yes, they can be very contentious. Um, I firmly agree with um, Commissioner Christopher's rules in here. That that I'll say you need to speak to the board as a body, not individually. This is not a place to lambast people. Um, but as long as those rules are being followed, I have no issue with the rest of it, because as long as they're. Speaking to things that are germane to the body, go ahead, bring it on. And where we will respond or we may not respond, based on how you're treating. I know there are people. Um, that I won't respond to any longer because I gave them enough options in which I said you can communicate in this fashion. Or I will stop responding, and I've continued to to uphold to that. Um. And and I think it'll work itself out. I think trying the new rules, um. And and I'm fine with number three saying uh, items on the agenda or germane to the to the body of the the county. Um. I'm fine with that, and if people start taking that to an extreme, because the one thing that people are gonna get really upset are. Is is when you cut them off. Um, and because they have something that they think, because the other thing that we have to understand is is that. A lot of the community thinks that we can. Do anything, that we have control over the sheriff, that we have control over all these things. And the sooner that they can make that known and we can answer that question. And redirect them to where they can be most useful is good to me. I think that is good public policy. And so while I see where you're coming from, Commissioner Christopher, and and of course, I'm worried about it, as long as the chair is going to. Um, stop the personal attacks and everything else. Um, I think I think that there, and remember, with two readings, we can change the rules, so if people. Can't follow the rules, then we can always fix it, but I would, I would start with being more open, uh, so that people can comment.
I. I would just add that you said that when people misspeak or ask a question, we can answer the question. Um, as you mentioned earlier, public comment, I think was one of you. Mentioned earlier, public comment is supposed to be, and all the advice and training you will ever get and receive. For hosting any public meeting. Is that comment is directed at the board of the whole and not an individual, not even to the chairman. It's it's spoken to the chairman, but it's directed to the board of the whole. But there, it's not a question and answer time. So if somebody says something incorrectly. You just get it, take it. You can email them later, but if you respond. You are not of order. Are we aware of that?
We have uh, our own policy which allows us to respond at the end.
That is in violation of Roberts Rules of Order, that this board is supposed to be followed. I guess I would say, while I understand where you're coming from and I, in in all intensive purposes, feel the same way. I'm trying to. Protect whoever's sitting in this chair. Next year, because it will be the person sitting in this chair. That gets to make. Every little ruling, every little gavel bang. Every little parliamentary procedure on a point of order. And I would certainly hope. That they are. Ready, willing and able. To be the parliamentarian. On the rules currently in place because you're opening Pandora's box to rule challenges. During every public statement. So when somebody steps off, you're gonna have to gavel and sir, sir, please keep this to the board of the whole and not to the individual. Sir, sir, that's not germane to, I mean. Whoever sitting here is gonna look really bad. Um as you're having to correct those people, because if you don't. It could be called point of order because the chairman would be out of order. We're not keeping the dialogue. The direction it should. So again, I understand where you're coming from, just understand the Pandora's box you're making for whoever's sitting. Um with that, if it is the board's consensus that we have a community forum. Um separate from citizen comment on items of the agenda. Uh germane to county business. I would ask that we, again, like you said, it could be changed later. Did we do it on the first and third Tuesday of the month? At the end of the meeting before executive session. Uh I will reinsert. The community forum. Language. Uh in here and we'll relook at it again when we. Go over everything else, if that's amenable, if it isn't, let me know now and I'll change it to whatever. This board. Uh once.
I wanna hear where Commissioner Zoller is from, you've heard two different kind of directions there, how do you feel?
I'm actually comfortable with where our public comment is now. I have no problem with it at all, I have no problem going forward in the future, even if I were chairperson. I feel like it's my obligation to understand the rules and protect the. The county and the board as is. And I've always. Came into this position um. With the idea of respect. Uh respect to everyone in the room and that's what I personally ask of people, just like they would ask of me. And if that's. If it becomes contentious, I think. As we go through the processes and they learn, this is how we're going to run the meetings, then people adjust and learn and. Move into that position, it's taken us a while this year even. Um from January to now, our meetings are very, very different during public. Way less contentious.
Well, I would I would I would add that most of the people. Potentially commenting early on. Had their situation put to bed, so they don't need to comment anymore. So now we just get the regulars.
What if we just take, this is just my suggestion, what if we just take public comment away except for one? Tuesday a month at the end of season.
So you're you're.
A written comment only.
Written comment only and one day a month that we allow.
Yep.
Any at all comment or comment germane to the county? I, just like I tell people, please keep your comments relevant.
German to the.
Relevant, because I don't need to hear about the presidential election or, you know.
Yeah.
Uh so your recommendation to clarify, not to put words in your mouth. Is to remove public comment. Except for written comment only is required by law. And have one day a month, let's say the first. Monday of every month. That we take open public comment. That's germane to anything in the county.
What I would like to do honestly is leave it the way it is, move forward, just like we've always offered, open public comment to our constituents. They feel welcome in our meetings, whether uh we. Have issue with. Their ideas or what they say, but we handle the meeting so that it's respectable. And we leave that open public forum, so people feel that they're heard. And then uh. We've been commenting back um. I'm not so sure. If we should be commenting back, maybe we should be just taking. Uh open public comment. And then respond in emails or. Or answer questions further in a different way.
Well, I will say going forward, my comment back is going to be in accordance with Robert's rules or in parliamentary procedure. Of every governing body, this board is not supposed to comment back. If you have comments, please contact me outside there, that will be my comment going forward, starting January one. So uh if this board wants to comment back, it can. It's in violation of Robert's Rules of Order and could potentially see a. Point of order called every time it does. Um for violating Robert's. But that's up to the board.
Thank you. Try not to speak out of turn. So I guess I would like to see personally um in this public comment, public forum rules um. Um that as long as is the speakers are asked to identify the agenda item. Or uh ensure that it's germane uh to the the business of the county. Um I have no problem with every week doing it as we are. Um I know that we would take a lot of flak for trying to. Limit the public's involvement with their commissioners if we did it any other way. Um I don't want to see that, I want people to be able to communicate with all three of us at the same time. Um because it's really hard, difficult to do that. Um and uh based on Commissioner Christopher's um point of order. Uh motions, I would also like to see in this public comment forum. Um as part of the rules that the Board of County Commissioners can respond at the end of um. The public comment period um and ensure that's enshrined in there so that none of us for responding back or. Trying to give an answer to someone uh gets called out on a point of order.
It can even know, um thank you for your comment, sir, but you can. Uh be called out on a point of order for responding, even if it's in your board rules, you're allowed to respond because your board rules follow Robert. Unless you wanna make a title in here that your board rules don't follow Robert's. You will still be.
So so over all of these years, it's just been a policy that they've done it, or what are you saying? Why?
Has. Followed Robert's Rules of Order loosely. Um and uh nobody's. For the most part, although I did. Uh claim of horn of order last year three times and was ignored all three times. It doesn't usually. Um get challenged for going outside of.
So can you provide to me where you're getting this, where you read it? Can you send it to me on an email?
What it would, Robert's Rules of Order?
Yeah, just that that portion.
God, Google it.
Well, just the portion where it says they won't respond.
Oh, that commissioners don't respond to comments, oh, that's fairly easy.
Cause I for one.
Do you not have to sit through Jurassic Parliament in one of your trailer?
But I I for one too, don't want to be blocked from my public, I want to interact with my public.
But you, I would argue you also want your meetings to not be contentious. Try and see how you get both.
But I don't, I don't think in real life you're ever going to have anything that's not got something contentious somewhere. You're you might have really good days, you might have a contentious day, it's what life is in public office.
Okay, so I'm removing. Community forum and dates and times and whatever. It's, you want worded, the board can respond, but you don't want it the. As just items on the agenda. You want it the way we have it now where we say germane to county business, is that correct?
That's, that was my.
Which pretty much is the same thing we do now.
Right.
Oh, there's some things that are not germane to county business. Uh for example, people talking about your your personal ADU. That would be a perfect opportunity for either the chair or you to make a point of order. Um to bring that up if the chair doesn't to say that is, that is not germane to the county business, because you're talking about an individual.
Well, right, I would, I would not say necessarily germane to county business, but that is a personal attack on an individual. And or, and I would also add in here, it doesn't just list us. It also includes attacks on staff.
Yes.
That must be protected by whoever sitting in this chair. To gavel them down and or potentially mute them. Um but if you're going to do that. Then go with the direction you're currently going.
And we, and you know. We haven't done a great job at it this year of cutting. Those attacks off.
Because we don't have anything in policy saying we can't.
Okay.
Well, I guess you don't have it in policy saying you can, you risk limiting somebody's free speech.
Doesn't Robert's rules deal with that in in itself?
No.
You can make personal attacks according to Robert's rule.
No, according to Robert's rules, you're absolutely correct, but you don't have policies and procedures. In place, now a lot of these also have, which I don't believe I have in mine, it spells out. Disciplinary action for members that are. That that won't stop. Sir, that's not germane, sir, quit making personal attacks. If they continue, it spells out what you can do, you may be muted, you may be told to leave the building. Repeated efforts might be your ban from the building for a month, kind of scenarios like that. That if you're not going to limit it to items on the agenda. I might. I guess I would say include that in the next draft for you to at least look at. Um and you can always choose not to, but at least then it spells out.
Right, because we don't have those things in place now.
Correct, because if we do it this way, which is the way everybody else does it, you don't need those. But if you're allowing it open to darn near anything germane. You might, you might need those, so I'll I'll throw those into on a side sheet all in red and you can throw them out later if you want, so. Board can respond, germane to county business is the only stipulations, correct? Anything else? I'll have to edit a lot of this stuff. And I I will honestly say. These come unedited. Um that if we move it and change it, we will be the only board that has that for their board rules.
But we've also been doing, we've also been doing things a certain way in this county for the last umpteen years. And the community has found that that is the way they like to communicate with their board, so while I don't mind being different.
Right, but I would also add that the other counties did too until. The laws changed for public comment and this is how they've addressed the laws change.
Uh if we can move on, um number eight. Um. The two requests to speak during public comment, members of the public must indicate they wish to speak as instructed by the board chairman, I'm fine with a period after that. Um because we don't know what we'll be using in the future, whether it's Zoom or phone, it could still be Pus star nine, it could be a bunch of different stuff.
Way too fast, what do you want to do here?
Just a period after board chairperson.
And nothing else.
And then nothing.
Item number eight.
Yes.
Um wish to speak instructions of the board chairperson.
I don't want, if we stop using Zoom and we start using Teams, I don't wanna have to go in and change the rules or something, just make it simple that the chair.
Are you fine with deleting the rest of the paragraph?
I'm good with that.
I don't know if the. Number nine, the the heading comments in violation of the appearance of fairness doctrine. Um is the right way to put that. When someone makes a comment um during public comment period that needs to be on for the hearing. I don't know if that's in violation of the appearance fairness doctrine for them, for us, I think that could be changed. Um to make it more clear about. Um. The the comments that are made by the public.
About comments that might or may violate the appearance of fairness. I think we're, I think that what they're trying to do in that, and again, I didn't write it. They're trying to explain to the public. In the draft, why you might be told you can't speak on that right now. So I don't, I mean, give me a recommendation for what you're trying to if. What's what's your recommended change, I guess?
I'm still trying to figure it out. I would say quasi judicial comments um out of turn.
You're making it more clear? They don't know what quasi judicial is.
Well, I'm just trying to, this is on a short amount of time spent by.
How about? Compliance with appearance of fairness doctrine.
I mean, it's fine. I just didn't think it was the.
I mean, essentially you don't have a problem with the sentence, just the title.
Yes. I had to read it twice.
All right, if you're willing to move on from that, I'll put a question mark by it and do more.
Please.
I mean, technically you're right. Based on the rest of these rules. Let's take just public comment today, because it's all fresh in our head. It's almost like I would need to gavel in my hand. Pretty constant. So you can have whatever comment you want to allow, the person here just needs to know that they're gonna have the gavel. Uh when you get to the out of order comments.
So I guess the next question I have is how do we determine determine the difference between? An email that's sent to us um that is. A public comment versus an email that's sent to us. That's that's not for not to go on the minutes as a public comment.
Um to me, I've always interpreted that to an email sent to the board that goes to all three commissioners. Is a comment relevant? To the board. It's a comment sent to you, it's just comments.
Okay, but if it goes to B O C C, we need to classify that, so every email that comes to us. We need to classify in essence that as a public comment and then note it on the minutes.
Boy, that would be a lot.
Uh huh.
Because you would even have the. Stuff sent regarding, hey, Civics Plus, do you wanna update your website, is that a public comment? Stuff sent regarding, hey, Civics Plus, do you wanna update your website? Is that a public comment?
No.
Uh, but again. What are we deeming justified to be included in the packet as a public comment? I don't know that the. The way we currently. Pick and choose, it's pretty obvious. What a public comment is.
Because they're a public person and they're.
Well, I mean, they're commenting against under canvas, or they're commenting about solar, they're commenting about whatever, but does every. Email about solar that comes in from a certain individual get, I mean, you might as well just put a.
A placeholder.
A placeholder on the the meeting minutes. Uh, for the same people of the same comment four times a week.
Maybe they already did.
Is that relevant to? Um, a public comment that would need, I think that's a legal worthy question, really. Because I don't wanna be in violation of including their public comment in the board packet. Because technically it should be in the board packet if received in time. That's an interesting question.
I've seen it done different ways from cities. That any email that comes in that's that can be interpreted as a public comment gets. Included in the board packet as a public comment and.
I see that, I just, I guess I'm curious about the workload.
Well, and then when you think about comments on, say, zoning or anything else. That is written in hea- handwritten, that gets added to the agenda packet so that people can see that. We don't do that because we get to see it ourselves, um, because it gets from B O C C, we see it, it just it doesn't get added to the board packet. The question then becomes, is the board packet for us or is it for the public?
See, to me, I look at it more of. Is. The public comment that we've received, is it to an individual commissioner of the board? And is it relevant or germane? To. The agenda. If it is, it's a public comment for the agenda. If it isn't, and you're just. Public co- I mean, I got an e- email today about the Dallas Port wastewater treatment plant, probably all did. Um, if it went to all of us. But technically then, who's the police for that? Because it may have went to the three of us and not the B O C C.
That's what I usually do is if we we receive it, I distribute it. And then I need to print off a copy and that gets put into the minutes and it's the official record that goes to the audit groups.
So it is captured.
I I would, I would recommend. That we don't police which ones are or aren't. We leave that over there. For them to use their educated opinion. On whether it's uh part of the packet or just an email that people wanted to forward off.
So I guess there's another piece of that, though, that if someone is out of order in their comments and we rule them out of order. Right?
Right.
Um, same thing with an email, if an email is derogatory in nature. But it is germane, but they can't use their. Their adult persona persona um to get their point across, is that something we would include in the. Agenda or the agenda packet to send over for the auditor for. You know where I'm going with that?
I I get where you're going, but I think you're going to create a packet that's eight hundred pages.
Did, but it had.
And unless this board is willing as chairman to discipline such individuals. And remove their right to public comment is disciplinary action. What did, what it, what purpose would you be?
It's already in here. We we have that right to remove people for up to one year. For making public comment.
And I'm not opposed to the idea. I just, before I would do such, I would make sure we had a legal opinion on what is or what is not an official public comment. Or the minutes or the word pack. That's, so if you wanted to ask the legal question. I would be okay with that. Hopefully, you're taking notes of the legal questions and we can pass that in here.
That's really good for you.
Write it out on the sticky and I'll stick it.
You couldn't read it.
I can't read my own writing.
Elise's writing.
All right, the question is. What exactly? Is written public comment? That needs added to the agenda. Or included with. Okay. Sticky received. Where were you?
Uh, just wanted to make sure everyone is good with uh part B, rule nine. Abusive and harassing behavior.
Part B.
Uh, it's page fourteen.
This is the part where I. Most counties had full page.
Of what does?
Essentially spelling it totally out. They also take this and they stick it to the wall outside, so everybody knows. And I would also recommend that if we do this, once approved, it's emailed to our. Regulars. Um, but that's the part where I said that, I mean, feel free to look at it now, but in the next packet. Because of the du- changing the first part, I wanna include. The full list of what. Most people have and will have future discussion. Uh, on the full list, but if you got anything for this, spell it out.
Um, I guess the question is, um, it says during board meetings. Should that also be included for uh?
Word meetings, which line, oh, uh, number one.
B, no, just B, abusive or harassing behavior during board meetings. Is this also electronic abuse and harassment or just during meetings?
I think that's the question it would. Honestly, I believe the electronic abuse could fall into intimidation of a public official, which is already illegal. You would just have to find somebody willing to charge and prosecute. Um, which we don't have.
Right.
So we're making rules to.
So there, there, there is, there is the criminal side, charge and prosecute is a criminal side, which is under E. But there's also the board's ability to. Deem and and set aside the exclusion of future attendance from board meetings for a period of up to one year. Uh, based on abusive and harassing during a meeting, well. To most, I would think that electronic abusement and harassment is the same. Communications, communication.
Because.
But I don't.
Migrate to that.
But I don't. Again, I don't know whether a legal opinion, which again, that would be a legal opinion. Would. Interpret. That to be in a meeting. And let me warn you. The rule stipulating that you must only provide written comment. Does not. Remove your responsibility to provide that. Or phone for people that are hearing impaired or medically not able to attend your meeting. If you weren't going with that. So if you look at the. R C W that states that written public comment. Is accepted. It also spells out people that have. Restrictions. That would allow them not to be able to attend. Trying to be as vague as possible on this one. The hearing impaired, are those that do this a lot?
Well, we have that number.
I understand that. So my point is. Potentially. Just because you. I don't know, maybe it might be, I'll withdraw my. Howdy, sir. Coming in to see how the other half operate?
I'm not half. I just wanted to, you, if you have a chance, can we talk about that meeting tonight?
Um, no, because we're still in open session and we're still on Zoom and everybody's listening to us.
Okay.
So let us conclude, which we plan to be done. By three.
Okay.
So uh, we have an executive that we have to do and we'll probably stop what we're doing right now and take that executive and then be done by three and then we'll have time. As long as, are you trying to go over with all of us? What's going on tonight? Are you trying to just go over with one of us? What's going on?
I, well, last night we discussed, it was the whole city council was gonna come and they thought all the great commissions. This is just the round table to get started.
Okay, well, we, I would say we don't know what's going on. We were just asked if we could attend and bring people. And so I believe all three commissioners are going to be attending. But this is just a round table informative question and answer if agencies got a question of. The Sheriff's Department or Public Health or Senior Services or whatnot. The the county people should be able to be in attendance to answer said questions. Um, I was just gonna have it, agencies or organizations at the round table discussing. And no citizen comments, there's comments for later if we ever decided to take action on something. Um, and that we really, I mean, I guess I'll be. Meeting hosts for the sake of trying to keep order, but it's a free for all by everybody is the way I understood it, dealing with. Crime, drugs, fentanyl and homelessness.
Exactly.
Everything, so. But that's kind of what I know, I just.
I didn't know what they're, cause I think the whole city council is coming as well.
We've noticed it, so, yeah, we're good. Yep, no, you're good. Bust on in, Mayor Cannon.
There we go.
Uh, yeah, we'll be done probably seventeen minutes if you need more than that. Um, with that, do we wanna call Rob down and we can kinda? Do you see anything else with this that you have issues with, or we can go kind of back through it? I mean, we're kind of on the last page.
Um, the only other thing I have is quasi judicial body. Two things, um, during hearings or appeals, the board sits as a quasi judicial body. Uh, I think that needs to be changed to the board may sit as a quasi judicial body, and when we have hearings. On a legislative nature, we are not a quasi judicial body. Cause then we're a legislative body. Um, and then at the start of each hearing, uh, make sure it's spelled hearing or herring.
I saw that right when you, uh.
And now that Rob's here, that was the last I had.
Okay. You don't like hearings in your meetings?
Red herrings?
I was halfway into the witness protection program when I heard my name, so.
It is haunted here, I have somebody turns the air conditioning on downstairs. Yeah, cray cray.
It's fine in here.
I am, I'm going through manopause.
In that case, lose my report.
It's an executive session, not a report.
I didn't say the word that everybody's waiting for me to say out.
Nope. Ah, do you wanna call it out, Mr. Chair?
Um, what printer are we using?
I don't know what it is.
Review performance discipline and qualifications of a public employee. Qualifications, is that correct?
Think so, yeah, I I don't know if that.
I don't know what it's about, so.
I'm assuming. Applications.
Applications for.
That would be qualifications, and you want fifteen minutes, correct?
I think that's fine, yeah.
You can let me read this and then you can come off. Uh, with that, the board will be convening into executive session with accordance to R C W three two dash, sorry. The board will be convening into executive session in accordance with R C W four two. Dot three zero dot one one zero print one print G to review the performance discipline and or qualifications of a public employee. Uh, inter- issues of a general nature will be discussed in open session. We're gonna be going in for fourteen minutes, that makes it a round number. Sure, fourteen minutes. Um, we'll be back at, uh, we will open back into open meeting at. Uh, three o'clock and. Uh, we'll be, are we recessing or are we adjourning for tonight?
Uh, we are, well, we're recessing, cause we're gonna come back in on, um.
Yeah, but that's not our official board meeting downstairs.
No, we're recessing um until uh the regular meeting on Thursday.
Correct, okay. Uh, and then when we come back, we will be recessing until Thursday.
With the note that we will be having a meeting um with the city council at four o'clock.
Works for me. Now, we're gonna be back, we're gonna go in for fifteen minutes, we're gonna be back at three oh two. Cause that took too long. Thanks, everybody. Goodbye, see you next week.